Welcome to the Pittsburgh Planning Board, Tuesday, May 28th, 2024. Some opening remarks. All meetings of the Pittsburgh Planning Board are open to the public. This does not mean that the public participates in all aspects of the meeting. It simply means that the meeting itself, including all discussions and votes, is open for public view. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing, please raise your hand and the board will acknowledge you at the appropriate time during the hearing. The board will also monitor any participants that are attending virtually for questions at the appropriate time. Virtual attendees are asked to use the raise hand function to be acknowledged. One, state your name and address. Two, approach the center table and either stand or sit. This allows you to be seen and heard clearly by everyone in attendance. Three, the Planning Board requests that comments be limited to no more than five minutes in the interest of time. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast, and I ask that anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves with the record now by stating their name and address. And, uh, none. All right. Our first item this evening, we do have an approval not required, plans A and R, for which some approval is required. And that item is 17 Pratt Street.
Pulling up right now.
Good evening. For the record, Bill Hanigan with Hanigan Engineering. This plan which you're about to see, there's several buildings on this land, and they're going to be selling one of the buildings, the one that's on what's known as lot one. The lot has sufficient frontage and area as a separate lot. The remaining land also has sufficient frontage and area. The buildings are previously not conforming relative to setback, but the new property line does provide the required setback to both buildings on either side of the property line between lots one and lot two. There are egress points on Pratt Street in Woodland, as well as a proposed easement from Home Street between the buildings shown at zero and I think that that's 24, if I can see from here, Home Street. So there'll be access from that point.
Twenty-four, yep.
So it was a single lot?
Single lot, and now that we're taking one piece of it, cutting it off and selling it.
Okay, lot one.
Yeah, lot one.
Eleven thousand fifty-three square feet, and lot two, twenty-three thousand two hundred and thirty-two square feet.
Correct.
That's for the transcript.
Just doesn't matter as far as the A and R goes, but just out of curiosity, because I can't tell, so on the Pratt Street side, on the top of this site, next to building 1519, this building right here, there's a garage. Is that on the site or on the neighbor's site, this one right here? You actually show the garage.
I can't see where you're pointing.
Uh, so...
Your cursor's not moving.
Oh, because my screen's paused. Hold on one second. That's what happens when you're trying to do too much. All right, right here, this garage right here.
I don't know whether it's right in the line or just over.
So I couldn't tell if the line was around the garage or if the line was like...
Well, that's an existing line.
Yep.
So that's not what we're changing. We're not changing anything in that area there.
Okay, so it's on the neighbor's property is what I'm saying.
It's the neighbor's garage.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Whether it encroaches onto our property.
I couldn't tell if the line went around the garage this way or around the garage this way, because there's no real lot, well, it does, I guess it says eighty feet there.
Well, actually, this is, the PDF you have is actually, we actually brought in an updated plan, because this was plotted on draft mode, so that line didn't show up dark enough, so on the updated plan, it's clarified.
Perfect, excellent. Excellent. And the only other question I had was kind of a procedural question, doesn't matter again as far as the A and R. Looks like there's an encroachment of a deck or porch on 24. Does that matter at all in the grand scheme of things?
Nope.
They show it right here on the bottom.
It's a existing encroachment. We're not creating it yet.
Fine, again, just a curiosity question. Is Home Street a public way?
Hmm, that's a good question. Usually we label them.
It's, I know our GIS usually labels private PBT when they're private, so it's probably a public way. All right, I got nothing.
Okay.
Any other board member have any questions?
No.
Good.
Well, there's four of us, so we all get to sign.
We all get to sign, all righty. I'll sit with that.
I'll put the agenda up while we're waiting, in case anyone wants to see what is on the agenda.
So, waiting for Amanda, who else is here? I forgot. Our next section is minor site plans, for which we have none.
Allyn and Alex.
Allyn and Alex, too. And we're on to our public hearing segment. For, I'll go through, we have one item. The first one is the Scenic Road Act in a joint hearing with the Planning Board and Tree Warden. That was continued from our April 23rd last month meeting, and it's going, request to continue to next month's meeting, when we'll have the Tree Warden available.
Make a motion to continue to June 2nd.
A motion's been made with the second. I was gonna take roll call vote. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed. Allyn?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Amanda's not here yet, correct? No Amanda yet, right?
Correct.
Got it.
Might want to, in case someone's here for Fairmont, you might want to just do that now.
I'm gonna do that one, too.
Perfect.
Another item that is request to continue this evening is special permanent site plan review. AG Dreamflip LLC is proposing to build a multifamily PUD of nine units on Zero Fairmont Street, and that was continued from our April 23rd meeting, request to continue to our June meeting.
No, July 23rd.
Oh, July?
That's what the email says. Says we'd like to request to continue us to July 23rd, meaning to allow more time for the process to continue.
Let's just say July meeting, because we ought to talk about the 23rd.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay.
Make a motion to continue to our July meeting.
Second. Motion to continue with the second. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed. Roll call vote. Allyn?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Amanda's not here yet, correct? No Amanda yet, right?
Correct.
Got it.
Might want to, in case someone's here for Fairmont, you might want to just do that now.
I'm gonna do that one, too.
Perfect.
Another item that is request to continue this evening is special permanent site plan review. AG Dreamflip LLC is proposing to build a multifamily PUD of nine units on Zero Fairmont Street, and that was continued from our April 23rd meeting, request to continue to our June meeting.
No, July 23rd.
Oh, July?
That's what the email says. Says we'd like to request to continue us to July 23rd, meaning to allow more time for the process to continue.
Let's just say July meeting, because we ought to talk about the 23rd.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay.
Make a motion to continue to our July meeting.
Second. Motion to continue with the second. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed. Roll call vote. Allyn?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
All right. We have before us this evening, special permanent site plan, Clearwater Real Estate Group, LLC, proposing to build a three-family residential development in NBD District at 845 Water Street, continued from our April meeting.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the record, Bill Hanigan with Hanigan Engineering. Since our last meeting, some of the discussion centered around the look of the building. The architect that was involved was no longer able to continue with working on this, so we hired a new architect, and they came in and suggested some changes, not only to the building layout, building itself, but actually to the layout of the building on the site to provide more of a residential look from the street. We had it more or less parallel to the power lines easement, and they rotated it counterclockwise to make it somewhat more parallel to the property line, which provided a better, a better look from the building from the street side as you're coming down the hill. We also jogged the building a couple of different spots to provide depth to the building along with the gable of the garages. So this is, the top view is from, if you were standing on the site, looking at the building, here's the top view, and then from Crisziak, have the bottom picture is from, I guess you would be heading up Water Street, I'm sorry, up Crisziak from Water to, in that's the view you would see. So there's a lot more depth and definition to the building facade, breaks up a lot more than the previous one, which was a lot flatter, and I think this layout really works well. It works well on the site, but we didn't have to do too much changing, aside from the rotation of the building and realigning the parking spaces to fit this new building. We still have the same number of parking spaces as originally proposed. All the drainage and utilities are essentially the same, with the exception of some of the connection points to the building itself, but aside from that, the changes were, I think, a big step forward in the look and feel of the building. We had questions about the color. This, from what I understand from the architect, is the standard color that Revit uses in their base programming, which is not really terrific. We're looking more of a blue tone, a blue-gray tone or a gray tone type of color for these, which will be decided prior to construction, but that's where we're heading on this one. They're still looking at the option of whether we have the two-on-units be one color and the center unit being a different shade of the same tone, but that's kind of the idea of what we would be looking at.
Okay.
Okay? I think that accomplishes what we tried to accomplish from the last meeting.
Is it the same siding material, or is the peaks going to be a different type of material?
I don't think we've gotten that far, but I think...
Like a shaker?
Picture looks like shakes.
Usually they've been going with the shakes on the top.
Yeah, that's what it looks like in the image.
Yeah, the regular horizontal siding, and then the shakes on the top with the breaker band at the garage level, where there is no physical break in the siding.
All right, and let's see, I think you also submitted a landscaping plan, too, recall.
The landscape plan stayed the same, with, you know, I guess we did modify the area around, you know, the planting beds around the driveway to fit what we had on this plan versus the previous one.
I was gonna say, I just, why don't I, I have in my mind that I saw, but there was some tree, there were some shrubs along the fence.
Trees might be shown in the landscape plan itself.
Yeah.
This is just a rendering.
Okay.
All of them.
Thank you.
Let's see, right here.
Okay. Right, yep.
Oops. That's what you're talking about?
Correct.
Yep, so that hasn't changed.
That is not, well, it's changed to fit this site, yep.
Yes, updated.
But the perimeter plantings have remained the same, correct?
Yeah, okay. So approving this landscaping plan is that?
Correct, yep.
Correct plan? This is that version?
We are still working with Unitil. There's a wire that goes across, I guess it would be unit one existing, and we're working with them on relocating that pole. So as we provide power to the site, we have to bring that across the street anyways, we're working with them on relocating the pole and then adjusting the, adding another pole further down to keep the remain, maintain the wiring location.
Is it three bedrooms per unit?
Yes.
And each one has also a garage space, too?
Yep.
What's the size of the, each unit approximately, square footage?
I'd have to go back.
Roughly about thirteen hundred.
And what would be the approximate timeline for the project, to begin project or to end the project?
Presuming we get all the approvals, we still have to go and talk with Unitil. I would say we probably could start as early as July and end of the year type of thing?
Yeah.
Beginning of the spring?
Okay.
You know, less than a year is the hope.
Yesterday.
Yes, where we start?
Yesterday.
Just kind of like making sure, like, you know...
We wanted to start a month ago.
A year or like two years to complete, it's enough time.
That should be enough time.
To do the project. Okay. And I don't know whether the board feels that you want the applicant to come back as just like a condition, a vote, when they choose the actual colors at that point, or just more of a, no, at this time, a vote, particular shade, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, I think that just because we, it's a traditional thing, we'll just make it subject to final color, final elevations with color being provided. Once you guys get, you know, siding choices and you decide what you want to do, just show it to us before you install it, not as a condition of a building permit, just prior to installation.
Right, so we probably won't do it on our rendering, we'll probably actually pick the materials up and maybe just come by and...
I would, I would say that's fine.
Okay.
I'll say final color elevations or submittal of samples.
Yeah.
I do think the plans that you submitted to the board this evening are much improved over the ones that we saw last time. You know, the ones that we looked at last time, the front of the building was basically just a flat.
Right.
Just a flat facade, very little interest to it. I really, I really like the different bump outs that you added to the building, it gives the building a lot of depth, a lot of definition. I think the window placement is a little different also, makes it a little more sense.
Yeah, it was, it's still tough on that third, the sideways unit. We tried adding an additional window up top, but it just didn't seem to fit within the light internally, but it's still, I think it's a much better, I think it's just a better building.
Oh, it's much improved, much more interesting.
Oh, yeah.
Much better looking.
The roof line, everything.
But we can reserve one for you for purchase.
Probably gonna be priced too high for me.
Yeah, I agree with Peter. I like it.
Yep.
Good change.
All right, thank you very much.
Does any board member have any questions? Allyn or Alex online?
No questions for me.
No questions for me at this time either.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that has any comments, questions regarding this application?
Is it 845 Water Street, if anyone's curious?
Yep, 845, next to what, use it, Potatoes Chip Factory.
And we're still, oh, go ahead, Harold.
I just want to take an opportunity to thank you. I think the feedback that you gave us was excellent, and we hope to keep that interaction going with other projects that we're gonna hopefully bring to the board, so thanks.
Great.
Thank you.
We appreciate all your efforts, this is fantastic.
Before we close the hearing, before we get to, the only questions I have were, so the things we, the things we already talked about last meeting, we had a conversation about adding the ADA receiver on the other side of Crisziak, that was one of the things the DPW had requested, the...
So we looked at that, and I think it's already there.
Okay, that's fine.
I think it's already there.
Okay, my notes just said going to add ADA receiver on the other side of Crisziak, and then obviously responding to whatever DPW comments might still remain, I don't think there was anything new, because nothing changed from last month, so if there's anything outstanding, just responding to them and...
We'll take care of that in the construction set, prior to building.
And how did the, you did put upgrade to the sidewalk in that corner as part of the project?
Yeah, that's still on the plan, so Paul can flip over to that. But there is, on the other side, there is a tip-down and level piece of granite, it's pavement right now, but it does exist, so it's not going to nowhere.
Okay.
Okay?
Across the street.
Yes.
And Bill, can you just, for the purposes of refreshing memory, what sort of agreement did you, with DPW, did you make for the sidewalk work that we had talked about? Was there any in front of?
It's on the plan.
Okay. Okay, so it's all, good, good, then we don't have to worry about conditions then.
Right, if you bring it up, if you bring up the, you can see the sidewalk work, it's shaded right up against the edge.
Okay.
Okay? And then on the other side of the street, if you put in a little bit, there is a, in the survey work, we found the tip-downs and the flat piece of granite that's flush with the pavement on that side.
Okay.
It exists already.
Okay.
Did you find that additional water line connection? No, we have to still go across the street.
No, the water does not come down this far, so we have to bring it ready from Route 12.
All right. Any other further comments or questions?
I'll sit.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion's been made to close the hearing. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed. Roll call vote. Allyn?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Discussion?
So, I don't know what you have for notes, Paul, but I don't have much for conditions. The only one I have is what we just talked about, final color elevations or submittal of samples being provided prior to installation of siding.
Dan, I just have like two years to complete.
Right, our normal standard conditions, right, when to start, when to finish. But yeah, everything else I think was handled in the plan set.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
No.
Make a motion to approve the Clearwater Real Estate Group, three-family residential development at 845 Water Street, subject to the conditions we just noted.
Second.
Second.
And there's a second, and a third. Fantastic. All those in, so a motion's been made with the second. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed. Roll call vote. Allyn?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Still no Amanda.
Not yet, okay.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
So, I've got Amanda's not here. Oh, it's not a special permit, though, so we do only need four.
Which one, what are we talking about, site plan?
Applewild.
We still, we still have six people here anyway.
Amanda's not here.
That's still five.
And Tracy.
Applewild only needs four votes, that's site plan.
All right, I just wanted to make sure they do that enough.
Yep. Actually, for all the remaining, we have no more special permits.
Yep. So we do have a member recusing herself, and our next item for site plan review is Applewild School, proposing to build an athletic and wellness center, forty-nine thousand two hundred ninety square foot closed, four area at 120 Prospect Street. Good evening.
Thank you. My name is Dan Quayle, I'm the architect with Lincoln Architects, and with us, we have Amy Jolly and Amanda Packard, and our crack civil engineer who just walked in, perfect timing, Anthony Cleaves.
So Dan, you have a lot of drawings.
I know.
What would you like up on the screen? What do you think would be most helpful?
Maybe we should start with the landscape drawings?
Okay.
And then we can go to the presentation drawings a little later.
Okay, just to orient everybody, well, first of all, the project involves the demolition of three existing buildings. The existing, there's an existing gymnasium that was built approximately 1970, a pre-engineered metal building, that will be coming down. There's another smaller gym that's immediately adjacent to that, and then there's a small Cape Cod-style residence with a flat roof annex. All three of those portions are coming down for the new health and athletic and wellness center. So just to orient everybody, the, on the right-hand side is Prospect Street, running up and down on the page, and at the bottom of the page is View Street. On the right-hand side, I have a, yep, that's the existing dining hall. To the left, in the large building you see in the center, is the new proposed Athletic and Wellness Center. Just to the left of that is, on View Street, is an existing residential building that's used as a dormitory and faculty housing, and then directly behind that is the Anson Academic Building. So what we're looking to do is to remove the existing structures to allow for the construction of the new building, which is replace, is replacing sort of defective program space. The existing buildings are not in great shape, but it also is allowing for additional programming. So the main functions of the new building include gymnasium space for both the boys and girls teams. We have new aquatic or natatorium indoor pool. Currently, the school has an outdoor pool that's really only used for summer camps, it's in pretty bad shape. So we're, this proposal includes a new indoor six-lane pool with the associated locker rooms. One of the other things that we have in this new structure at the lower level is, the elementary school is directly, or the lower school is directly across View Street, and they really have no gymnasium space. So this, part of this project will new, will include at the lower level, at the View Street entrance, access for the younger students to have a sort of a PE dance, physical education space. As they get a little older and work their way up the grades, they'll actually go to the upper level where the bigger gymnasium is. And then we also have a wellness and fitness area at the lower level. Now, for those of you that are aware of the site, there are many vertical challenges here. We have about a 35-foot change in elevation from the lower level to the upper level in terms of existing contours, so we're actually digging this building as deep as we can into the site, trying to improve on connections between the buildings, improve on student flow. One of the, one of the goals here is between the two buildings, between the existing gymnasium or the proposed athletic center and the dining hall, we're gonna create a new pedestrian connection. I don't, not sure if my...
Do you want to see the elevations, because I have them up on another screen?
Or the, maybe the perspectives, if you go to the presentation?
Yep. Let's see, I have civil, landscape, stormwater, architecture, oh, presentation drawings, got it.
Okay, so this, this is a slightly older rendered version of the floor plan, but the, again, Prospect Street would be on the right-hand side, View Street to the bottom of the page, existing dining hall to the left, and then the View Street, what we call the View Street dorm in the Anson Building, and then just above this, on the top of the page is existing Crocker Building with the existing driveway loop. So this, this gives you an idea of where the building's going. We're digging it substantially into the hillside, particularly on the upper-left side, so it's a two-story structure, but it's on the, on the upper level, it's really a one-story building, and there's a partial lower level, and that's, again, to take advantage of the existing topography that we have on the property, so maybe if we can go to the next slide. So these next two slides, if you look at the upper-left, that's kind of, at the lower right-hand corner, you see the existing dining hall, the new building is to the left, the new proposed Athletic Center, and then you're seeing some of the other buildings and the existing driveway, the driveway loop. So there's sort of this pedestrian connection we're trying to create, which, because, you know, the younger students come from across the street, the upper students come from up the hill, and everybody goes to the dining hall, so it creates a little bit more of a dynamic space versus what currently exists, where there's an existing flat roof academic wing that's about 10 feet off the existing dining hall. We've broken up the massing of the roof lines and tried to use the materials, a variety of different materials, because it is a large structure. If, maybe go a little farther in, Paul. versus what currently exists where there's an existing flat roof academic wing that's about ten feet off the existing dining hall. We've broken up the massing of, of the roof lines and tried to use the materials, a variety of different materials, because it is a large structure. If, maybe go a little farther in, Paul.
Oh, I'm just, I, I know Mike and other people are looking at the elevation, so I'm just giving them a chance to see a closer version of each side, so, because the elevation, these, these are always the easiest way to get your bearings on what's going on.
Are tough to, tough to understand. So on this view, you're looking at the dining halls on the lower left-hand corner, and it's kind of the view of the driveway loop. So what we've, what we've done is, we have, we have entrances on multiple levels here, so off of the, coming from the sort of the upper part of the campus and existing Crocker, the main Crocker building, there's, there's an entrance on the left-hand side, which gives us access both to the gymnasium area as well as to the pool, and we have sort of shared locker facilities for both instead of duplicating them. And then on the, you know, again, that pedestrian link, if we maybe go to the next slide or two, here's a couple of views, maybe this, all right, so this, this view is from the upper driveway loop, looking at the new main entrance. So this will be an accessible entrance, sort of directly across from this is a handicap parking space. I think Paul may have seen this in one of the earlier versions at the economic task force meeting. We've moved that around because we had a backout condition off of View Street, which isn't allowed. So we have handicapped access at this level. Obviously, there's an elevator in the new structure as well. Combination of materials, you can start to see here, where, you know, the school colors are basically green and white. The existing building, the existing Crocker building has white lap siding that's approximately twelve inches to weather. So we're starting to use a metal panel that has a similar type exposure. We actually have ten inches and then a two-inch reveal to try and introduce some shadow lines. And then some of the areas where we have more glass, we're introducing some of the, the green color that's on campus in a variety of the buildings with the shutters and dormers and some of the trim. So we're trying to, even though it's a modern-looking building, we're trying to at least, you know, use different materials to break up the scale, but also reflect some of the colors, the school colors. So maybe if we keep going, we should have a few more of these. All right, so this, this view here, this is basically at View Street, looking up this new pedestrian link that connects us up to the driveway loop. So on the left-hand side is the new lower entrance to the athletic and wellness center. And then, one of the things you can't really see with the trees and the vegetation there, but one of the things we did was, on the left side of the new building, we kept that to a one-story portion with a sloped roof. The roof pitch is the same as the dining hall pitch, which is like a ten-twelve pitch, to try and keep the pedestrian scale in that area, but it also serves to break down this, you know, the scale of the building by changing the roof lines. Maybe the next slide. This is a little bit farther up, so here, you're just opposite the entrance, on the right side is existing dining hall entrance. We have about thirty-plus feet now between the buildings, which will be landscaped, there's built-in benches. Again, you're starting to see a little bit more of the materials. We have a stone veneer at the base of the new building. You're seeing some of the white lap siding, the metal lap siding, which picks up on the existing building. And then up above is, again, another view of the lobby from the upper, you're looking up at the upper-level lobby with quite a bit of glass, and, and again, introducing the green color. This is, again, looking at the upper entrance, entry lobby.
Same thing, right?
Same thing, but just a view at dusk. One of the things I didn't mention, which we can, when we look at the site plan, is, you know, there's a lot of different work going up on campus right now with the new dormitory that's under construction. And one of the things we're trying to do is improve the pathways and the lighting. So we've, we're, we'll, we can show you on the, on the site plan where the, the lighting is, and we're going to use the same light fixture that's being used at the dormitory to try and tie the whole, the whole campus together for the extra pole-mounted lighting.
And this is View Street to the left on this one?
Yeah, so View Street would be on the left, and to the right would be the, is the existing dining hall. So you're kind of looking at the end of the, the entrances on the left, but the actual doors face View Street, and there's a, there's a canopy there, which helps, you know, direct people inboard and also give them a place to get out of the sun. Another view, this is just up at the upper lobby, looking back down at the dining hall.
Okay, that's the last one there, unless you want to look at the.
No, I think.
I just skipped over the floor plans, but.
Yeah, if people are interested in that, I can certainly walk, walk you through that.
I mean, if you want to just give us the highlights of what's in the building.
Right, so on the, on the, on the main, what we'll call the main level or the upper level, we have the new six-lane indoor pool, there are associated locker rooms. And then there's also the gym, there's a gymnasium, which essentially is two full-size middle school courts with a divider, so it could also be opened up to have a high school game, a full-size high school court.
Sorry, hold on, hold on. I didn't, I had the screen shared, no one, no one was seeing what you were talking about.
All right, so on the upper right, that white area is, is the new, the new entrance, yep. And then we've got access straight into the gymnasium area, which is straight ahead. Now that'll be divisible into two to four different spaces, depending how the school wants to use it. So in theory, they could run a boys' basketball game and a girls' basketball game simultaneously, where currently they can't do that. And then in the upper part of the page, again, kind of dug into the hillside, is the new, the new pool area, and on either side are the locker rooms, which are shared by both the people using the pool as well, well, the students using the pool and the students using the gym. There are separate toilet facilities and shower facilities for the staff members. And then on the left-hand side is a new program offering for the school. There's four squash courts being added on the left-hand side on this level, so maybe if we go to the.
Can I ask, just curious about the labeling. It looks like a conference room, but it's labeled viewing.
Well, yes, we had many discussions about that internally. It's, a lot of folks, when they're watching their kids swimming, they don't necessarily want to be in eighty-five degree and a hundred percent humidity. They'd rather watch in air-conditioned space versus putting all the bleachers and, inside the actual, the pool area. So that, that was the idea on that.
Excellent.
There'll be some benches in, in the pool, but it's mostly for comfort reasons.
And, and just so people can follow, and the elevator's right here in the main lobby?
Right, right, and then the main, the main connecting stair is also in the upper right-hand corner. That'll get us down to the lower level.
And this is the lower level?
Right. So at the lower level, you can see the footprint above. The lower level's built out about half of the overall footprint. So the two areas in blue that you see are basically athletic-type spaces. The one on the right, we call it Dance in Motion. That's intended mostly for the younger children coming across from the lower school. And on the left-hand side of that, in the light blue, is, is essentially like a wellness and fitness aerobic-type space. We have a conference room down there, and then in the purple area is a student center. Currently, they use any space they can find for the student center. Sometimes it's the main conference room in the main building. And, and the reason it's located there is, it's directly to the right of this is the existing dining hall, so we, and we, the way we low, arrange this building, the new floor level here, at the lower level, is at the exact same elevation as the dining hall. So there can be some cross-flow between students, staff, parents, visitors, whenever there's events and whatnot going on. Ideally, I would have liked the student center, the area, to be up in the clouds and the top of the trees, but it just didn't work out that way. And then there's a few, just, you know, support spaces, we've got laundry room, locker rooms for the visiting teams.
Sorry, I didn't mean to, I thought you were stopping. I was going to go to the, to the site plan. Is that where you want to go next?
Yeah, I, I think we'll go there. I don't know if I have the over, if the overall is in here. Maybe if we can pan down a little bit, or is it on another drawing?
So I have.
Yeah, here's.
Where do you want me to go? This one?
The site plan, but up to the top, towards the top of the page. Some of you might, might recall, our initial thinking was we were going to locate a new, we're going to add some additional parking to the campus. We're going to locate a new parking lot at the bottom, kind of the exit part of where the driveway loop was. But for technical reasons, it wasn't going to work out. We're also trying to put the, the drainage structures and everything there, but the, the soil conditions and the water level, it's not going to work there. So what we've done is we've added eleven spaces up at the upper part. Basically, there's diagonal sort of head-in parking at the upper part of the loop now. We're adding some additional spaces along there. As well as directly opposite the new entrance, we're, we're going to actually regrade the roadway. Portions will be a little steeper, and then it's going to flatten out in front of our main entrance, and then the handicapped accessible van parking drop-off space is directly opposite with, with an access directly across to the new, the new main entry. Obviously, once you're in the new main entry, you have access to both levels with the elevator. Landscape-wise, we've done a lot, I think our landscape architect has done a very good job of trying to plant this. We've got different types of activity spaces for the children and, and staff in terms of outdoor potential dining areas, which they don't have now between the two buildings. And then they've introduced a couple of, I think, interesting features. We've got these, there's some built-in benches which have, you know, wood slats on them, but we also have these large seating benches which look like big river rocks. They're glass fiber reinforced plastic in a couple of areas, both at the upper level and at the lower level, opposite where the, some of the athletic spaces are. So I think when you look at the, you know, between the renderings and the, and the amount of landscaping and the things that are created, I think we've done a fairly decent job of trying to integrate this large building onto the site as best we can. I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I've got more technical stuff if you want to talk about that.
Okay. Can you tell me where any, are there any exterior mechanicals located?
There, there will be. One of the things that, actually, one of the changes we made last week in the lower left-hand corner, and I don't think this is going to show up.
This one right here?
Transformer was located there last week. We have since, in talking with some of the neighbors, we have shifted that farther up. It's, it's going to be kind of midway up on the left-hand side and then screened. There will be mechanical units on the roof. We have sort of a mechanical penthouse on the upper-left side. Again, because of the grades of this site where it's pretty substantial from left to right, and the building being buried in, you know, tucked into the ground as much as we can, we've, we've brought some screen walls up, and we're putting, we've got an air handler above, a dedicated outside air handler above that area. And then between the high volume of the pool, and maybe it shows better on the 3D, I could explain it, and the high volume of the gym, we've, we've tried to, we've got one of the units in there between the two volumes, so it's not that visible. We do have two units over the squash courts. And then we've, I've tried to push those as far back from the edges as we can. We're going to look and see if we can push it a little farther, and then we've added screening around it as well. There was another outs, dedicated outdoor, outside air unit that was above that sloped roof on the right side. We've had the engineers move that, change the unit type and move that inboard. We've got enough volume in the gym storage where we can actually put the unit inboard and just have a louver on the exterior facade instead of trying to screen a piece of equipment up there.
Any exterior dumpster?
No, what we're going to be using is, the existing dining hall's, again, about thirty feet away, and because we're so constricted on the site, and it's not a big trash generator like a dining hall, we're removing those facilities, the existing facilities at the dining hall.
The, when we met at EDTF, the Economic Development Task Force, there were some concerns with some of the departments. Do you know, first, maybe this question's for Chantel. Did DPW get a chance to review anything? Did we get any response back from them?
If you look in the folder of hearings right at the top, all the comments.
Oh, in, okay, in the hearing one, okay, I got it. All right, let's see.
And I think there was some comments.
Yeah, okay. Let's see what we have here. I'll have to make a mental note, Paul, of this comment here about Fairmont Street, to review that next month. There's nothing on that one. Let's see, Ryan. Please apply for wastewater and stormwater management permits at the time of building permit application. Utility site plan approval pending on coordination with combined sewer separation project. Pretty straightforward. Nothing from them. Okay, and that's, that's it. So there were, I, I don't know if they reviewed it and okay with it, but I think that, you know, if and when we get to the point of approval tonight, one of them will be, I know Nick had some concerns about the stormwater. I know you did a stormwater report. I can't review it, nor can any of the planning board, so it'll just be conditioned on DPW's satisfactory view of your stormwater. The water department had a concern about the timing of your flow tests. Do you remember that conversation?
It was just completed about two, three weeks ago.
Excellent.
We had a new one done because it was, the old one was older than a year old.
Perfect, and they're good with everything?
I haven't heard any comments back.
Perfect, okay.
Paul, could you move the site plan up to see View Street?
Yeah, hold on, I got the screen paused. I got to get back to it. I can zoom in a little bit too, if you want.
I think there was another plan that showed you, you were creating some on-street parking.
They got rid of it. It was the back out onto the street.
That was, that was early on. We had four parallel parking spaces along View Street. We took, we took those out.
Okay.
Moved them all inboard, as well as the, the handicap van space.
Okay.
Is off the main driveway loop now.
All right. Does any board member have any questions at this time?
All set.
Okay.
I'm all set.
All right, this is a public here. I'm going to ask for public comment, so ask anybody if they have their, want to come up, if there's anybody in-house who'd like to come up.
And even if anyone wants to see something on the screen, I can zoom in on stuff, I can pull up what you want, just ask. Happy to pull it up. Whoops, wrong one. Wrong one.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. My name is Michael McLaughlin. I reside at eighty Bond Street, which is the corner of View and Bond. Probably a neighbor that will be most impacted by, by the project. I do want to say that, you know, my wife and I are, are in favor of the school's success. I think this is going to be a good project. But obviously, due to the, you know, the magnitude of the building and its size being almost fifty thousand square feet, we do have some concerns. And Mr. Quayle from Lincoln Architects and Amy Jolly, the headmaster, have been, you know, pretty accommodating with setting up some meetings so that we could, you know, air our concerns and, you know, talk about what would help minimize some of the impacts, you know, visually in the neighborhood. You know, some of the things that are still kind of outstanding that would like to have a little bit of dialogue on is, as you are aware, any building of this size is going to have a lot of lighting. This is an old historic neighborhood. It's very dark at night. It's very quiet, you know, so we're going to see some change, right? And not that that's necessarily good or bad, but obviously, a building of this size is going to require, you know, lighting around its perimeter. It's a gymnasium, so there'll be a lot of windows, and at times, the building will be lit up. So just have a little concern about, you know, the glowing effect that, that we might see come from the building. One of the main concerns is obviously going to be noise. The school's lower building has heating AC mechanical devices on the roof, and, you know, you can hear those cycle on and off. Another director butter, which are here tonight, the LaPans, you know, we had some discussion about, you know, the audible change that we're going to have. You know, these units are going to cycle on and off, and, and we're only, you know, fifty, a hundred feet away. And I know that the, the 3D drawing that was proposed was very clean. It doesn't show really any of the mechanicals. I think it showed them sitting in the valley, but yet, the plans that were, were discussed last week showed them on top of the roof. So, you know, we're going to basically be looking at a building of massive scale with big mechanical devices sitting on top, and we're hoping that those devices can get pushed way back into the recessed area of the roof like the 3D one, the earlier drawing showed, or even mounted on the ground. I don't know if that drawing shows it.
Yeah, right here, right in the back corner, right here.
Yeah, but, you know, that's certainly a, a topic and a concern. You know, a lot of these drawings don't typically show all of the utilities, right? They show the, the beauty part of it, so we just want to be conscious of, they were gracious enough to relocate the power transformer, but where are all the other utilities? Are they going to be street-side? Can they be put on the sides of the building? And then, you know, finally, we're going to have a, a main, an, an entrance on the corner directly across the street from us that'll be new. And just curious about what can be done to try to maybe tie that in a little more architecturally, to make it aesthetically pleasing, you know, and kind of tie in with some of the architecture of the neighborhood, along with the architecture of the building itself, you know? Those are some of the concerns that, that I have. And thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Do you think, oh, go ahead. I was going to say, I guess we'll do them in, in a group afterwards, but maybe you can give us a presentation on where the electrical's going to be after this.
Evening. My name's Tim Hillman. I'm at eighty-one View Street. I echo everything that Mike just said, and we have the concerns that, that he raised. And we've had a great dialogue with the school. They've invited us up to look at the plans. I, I don't know if it's my lack of computer skills, but the notice that we got from you all said that the plans were going to be online, and I couldn't get them if they, if they were. When were they posted?
Pro, I can tell you when, because we.
I'm sure it's on my end, but we were very anxious to look at these. I actually came early and looked at the A&R plan thinking that they were that, so that, that's the first thing I'd like to.
May tenth they were posted, but we have a, it might be hard to find. We have a document center. All the cities, what, things are looked.
That's where I was. I'm sure they were there, but I missed them.
Document Center, does it go there? That's a question.
Yeah, that's where I'm getting all this stuff.
I know, but did, did you click the actual agenda link to, to go there, the link?
There was a link, there was a link in the notice.
Yeah, that's the link. I'm trying to make sure that link worked.
Let me put, okay, let me pull up the agenda.
That's how people can get.
I apologize, Mr. Hillman. I, I. I, it shouldn't, shouldn't be that way. I don't know if we had a, just a broken link or something. Let me see if the link in the.
So I just have two questions in addition to what Mike had. So if the, if there is not going to be any trash pickup from the new proposed building, I'm hoping that doesn't mean that the present trash area, which is at the base of View Street, is going to be increased. I'm not quite sure how you're going to handle the additional trash, but good luck to you and the Red Sox. If there is going to be increased traffic, which obviously there will be, the intersection of View and Prospect Street is an accident waiting for a place to happen. There are some bushes that have grown out from, at the bottom of the hill, causing people who are coming down View Street to get onto Prospect to creep out. I've had some discussions with Amy about that. And frankly, that, something needs to be done about that if the traffic is going to be increased. I am very well aware of it. I yell at my kids and my wife and everybody about it. It's, it's, it's dangerous. The only other question I have is, how many new off-street parking places will there be if there will not be any on View Street, which we're very happy about, that there won't be any on View Street? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi.
Right up.
My name is Don Ostrowski. I live at 33 Haskell Street, not far from where the Hillmans and Michael and others live. I am also a member of the Historical Commission and Mr. Quail very kindly accepted our invitation to meet with us and answer our questions and thank him for that. We, as a, one of the reasons we asked him to the Historical Commission is there's a stone wall on View Street. And, you know, most of this, the, the address is Prospect Street, but most of the front edge is on View Street. And there is a stone wall that will be taken out, understandably. And the, it, one proposal, and it may not be feasible, is to move the stone wall up in, in front of the dormitory house where it is now, because there's a slope there. There is no retaining wall. So that would be one way to mitigate the changes to the neighborhood, because the stone wall is kind of a fixture of the neighborhood and.
Is that, is that the stone wall you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah. So to the right is a concrete wall that is very unsafe. There's, you can walk on the top of that concrete wall and there's no railing.
Yeah.
And, and it's, it's very, talking about an accident waiting to happen. And then to the left is the, the stone wall. Now, one of the proposals is to eliminate all, all the stone except for the granite on top and use the granite on top like for benches or something. And, but the, the grade is the same going up View Street and the, just moving the wall, I, I think would maintain some of the present, I don't know if Michael would be opposed to that.
That's a great idea.
So, so is your suggestion on the left side of this entryway to put the wall on the left side of this?
Yeah, on the left side in front of the dormitory that faces View Street.
Okay, we can inquire.
The other point is the trees. Some trees have already been cut down. And that, as part of the other large dormitory project, a number of trees have been cut down. And the, and I saw with, with the presentation that there were trees kind of put into the presentation. So the question is, how many trees are going to be cut down or have been cut down? You know, overall, how many will be? There are pine trees behind the present gymnasium. Very lovely, lovely pine trees. I hate to see them go. And what about replacement of those trees to get a net gain of trees? You know, with climate change, trees are very important. Last summer, hottest summer on record, and they're cutting down trees on, on View Street. Just, and I think that's insane to me, unless you're going to replace those trees out elsewhere. So that's it.
Okay. Thank you for your time this evening.
Good evening, folks. My name's Jen Lapin. I live at 60 View Street and I am the immediate butter next to the dormitory. My home is surrounded on three sides by Applewild property and fronted by View Street. My husband, Aaron, our daughter is in second grade at Applewild. So I'm an Applewild parent too, and she's been there since early preschool. I agree with all my fellow neighbors' concerns and, like Michael, we want to see the school succeed. Our kid goes there. And, you know, we think it's, the school's in the position of receiving a really generous gift from anonymous donors, you know, the kind of gift you don't say no to. You know, so like Michael, I have, you know, concerns about some of the specifics, the details, and not used to addressing a group like this, so I'm a little disorganized. But I think some of the specifics, for example, others have touched on parking. I'm not going to rehash it, but for example, I think zoning 181.5163 and .512 has very specific requirements for the number of parking spots you need to have if you're doing indoor sporting events at a school, at least as I read the zoning. And we heard during the presentation, I hadn't even thought of this before, that there could be two simultaneous high school meets going on. And then there's a very large multi-lane pool, so maybe there could be three. You know, as a resident there, I know that right now cars park on, on View Street whenever there's a special event. I don't mind. People can't find a spot to park. It's a small neighborhood. Sometimes I'm telling him, just wave people in, they can park in our driveway. We're going to the event too, right? On the other hand, it's very tight. We had grandparents day, or special guest day, last week or two weeks ago at the school, and four cars parked up on my lawn. I don't think people are trying to be rude. Actually, it's the opposite. They're recognizing how skinny View Street is and they're trying to get out of the way. My, the garbage truck and the yard waste and the recycling already have to back up View Street, right? The truck has to go backwards up the street. If there's a snowbank, if there's any other parking on the street, it's very difficult. And as folks in the dorm can attest, the extreme rain last year has completely washed out the, the front of the road in front of the dorm. It's about this wide and probably 18 inches deep. So the cars that parked on View Street there, they cleverly straddled it, like it's, that street can't take more parking there. Okay. The lights, I'm very concerned about the lights. I was really supportive of the dorm project at 54 View Street. I didn't come and make any objections. I was saying, oh, it's great, we'll have kids next door, and I'm glad it got done. And it looks good, but the lights are not good. Our house is so bright at night. I have discussed it with the school, nothing changes, so there's a couple of years precedent there. I think zoning also requires buffer in terms of landscaping and plantings. These things haven't happened. It's, you know, it's like 20 feet from my dining room window. It's really right there. Stairwells are light at night, the front is light at night, and I didn't know it, but we heard in the presentation that they're planning to use the same lights. I think that the slope of View Street has not been correctly accounted for in the kind of light angle, mathematic planning of how to lay these things out. I don't, I don't know who's supposed to think about that stuff, but it's a very steep street. It's very steep and we're uphill from it. And so when we're on our first floor having dinner, we are above and we're already looking down on what this stuff is supposed to look like on the roof. Further, one thing that hasn't come up, I think this would be under 181.552, which actually says noise, but it's subject to Commonwealth 310 7.01, regards chemical handling of a large swimming pool. I don't want to smell chlorine. I don't want to smell it at all. The HVAC units on the dorm are facing our unit. They're not as quiet as the school said they would be. It is a near constant hum. It's okay in the winter, I don't care, but in the warmer months, when, when the windows are open, we hear it in our house. We smell the laundry detergent from doing lots of active kids laundry, you know? I don't want to smell swimming pool. I want to, although it has been mentioned, it's worth reiterating, this neighborhood is architecturally special. Applewild is literally built, as you know, out of architecturally important homes that were bequeathed to make a school. And the initial additional building the school did, the little buildings, the one was called colonial style, and that's sort of part of my point. There was a picture up on the screen, maybe you could bring it back, of showing, looking up between the dining hall on the right and the proposed gymnasium on the left. You can see that the dining hall on the right includes neoclassical elements. It has Tuscan column. It's properly proportioned. Same thing goes for the little structures. They're nothing fancy, but they don't stand out. They blend in. You don't drive up View Street and think, oh, these things are sticking out. If you go on MACRIS, the Cultural Resource Information System for Massachusetts, every single house that we live in is listed on MACRIS. I'm not exaggerating. Every single one. This is a really big project and you saw in the presentation that, that the presentation is at pains to, to kind of fit it on the screen. Wow, that's how it is fitting it in the neighborhood. It's really, see, well, you can scroll up a little bit. We'll see the edge of my house. See that, see that little white thing at the bottom? That's my porch. I'm right there.
Can you see it from this one better, right up here?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yeah. And there's a brick wall behind. This is, you know, it looks like it's in a field. I know, that's how, like, you have to do it that way. But really, it's woods and I want to see the night sky. I, I want to enjoy my backyard. I, you know, I'm fine, security lighting, fine. Put them on a timer. Make them motion sensitive. Put them on a timer that is like reasonable, not one that comes on at 11 at night. You know.
Aerial, if you wanted to, I know you wanted to see the trees, so this, this is the house we're talking about. This is the dorm, new dormitory. This is the site of the new building.
Yeah. Yeah, we're very, very, we're very close. So these are a lot of things that I'm saying, but, you know, my family's wealth is tied up in our home and we love our neighborhood and we chose it on purpose. We moved to Fitchburg, we bought that house on New Year's Eve, December 31st, 2018, and we picked this neighborhood because of it. We came all the way out here from Malden. I commuted all the way to Boston because the architecture is so fabulous. And that's true throughout the city, but this neighborhood probably has one of the broadest representations of all Victorian styles of home, all well-maintained, which might not have always been true, but right now it's true. And everybody in here has put, even now at this point, we have five years, but it's five years of effort and, and love and money into being good stewards of the historical value of our neighborhood. And I, I want to retain that value, both because of my wallet and because I love the neighborhood, I love the architecture, and I really wanted to, to be like that. We have Italian in it, colonial revival, shingle style, the only American-invented Victorian style, American four-square, Gothic revival, the Crocker House is colonial revival, of course. I mean, it's just, it's all there. It's a really, really, really important, architecturally important and beautiful neighborhood. And I want to keep it that way and I want the school to succeed. Yeah, the gyms, the old gyms are ratty, but this is more than a replacement for a gym. This is squash courts, giant pool. The kids are going to love it, like 100% for sure. The kids are going to totally love this thing, you know, in whatever form it ends up in. But that's not the only consideration. Then, then it's a, this is RA zoning. It's a lot to put in RA. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if, it might be a good time to explain exempt uses and.
Well, I think, so as an educational use, it is exempt from zoning. Granted, it is an RA, but as an educational use, that's why it's also in front of us this evening as a site plan, not a special permit. So they have, there's a by right use to, so the property for educational use at that. So we're looking, limited to really reviewing it as the, on the site plan, but that does involve the parking and landscaping and other aspects of that. So that's what we're focusing in on this evening too. Is there anybody online, any for, for questions? And then we'll ask for.
Just board members on, oh, hold on, I shouldn't say that. I'm looking at the summary on the top of the screen. Tracy, you paying attention to that? You're usually the one that catches me on it. Oh, she's not here.
Yeah, she's having a.
I don't know who I'm talking to. Hold on one second. All right. Participants, attendees, there are people on there, there are no hand raised. Hands raised. Oh, now there's a hand raised.
Now there's a hand raised, okay.
Mary Burton, you are free to speak. Just click the microphone button and you should be good, the mute button.
Hello, I'm Mary Burton. I live at 27 Haskell Street and our family has lived in this neighborhood for 42 years and we love the neighborhood and we've always thought Applewild, we've seen its ups and downs through the years and we're happy, we want them to be successful. However, we, we basically agree with most everything that's said tonight. All my neighbors have basically voiced what I was planning on saying. The only other couple issues that I want to add on to is the parking. Not only they can't park on View Street anymore, but they already park on Bond Street, which is a very steep hill downhill. And it's, again, parking is close to the intersections. It's very difficult to see for safety. Not only the one onto Prospect Street, which I agree completely with Mr. Hillman, but coming up from Bond Street, going onto View Street, it's very difficult. And my other question is, what is going to happen when the construction's going on? Because we use View Street all the time to access our home. We do not go downhill Bond, we go uphill Bond Street. And what's going to happen? It's so close to the street, where is all the construction equipment going to be? What kind of noise is it going to be? In the winter, people have to adjust their routes in order to avoid the icy hill in, on Bond Street when it gets very steep. So those are my main questions. And also the water drainage. We have a lot of downhill groundwater and when you dig so deep to put this new building in, is that going to impact the groundwater? A lot of people have sump pumps all the way down the hill and sometimes they're running constantly and then it causes ice on the Bond Street when it freezes over at night. So there's a lot of other issues that we deal with in the neighborhood, but that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. Anybody else online?
Not online, no.
Okay.
I mean, there's other people online, no hands raised.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience at this time? All right. We'll ask, Mr. Quail, will you be able to respond to some of these questions?
I have a list if you want to go through them. I'm sure you were taking notes too. If you want to start with lighting, because it's the first thing Michael mentioned.
Yeah.
You know, how we, how we make sure that this isn't going to be a detriment to the
You know, how we, how we make sure that this isn't going to be a detriment to the...
And any other photos to bring up or diagrams that we...
The light, the intention is that the light fixtures are all going to be dark sky compliant. So a couple of things, that, you know, the light fixture I was talking about earlier is the one that's being used in the pedestrian and the parking lot areas of the new dormitory, which is, and it's not, it's not in your package, but I have a copy here. So it's dark sky compliant. What's required by building code is we need a certain amount of foot candles outside of every, each egress door. So, for example, the main lobby, which is on the screen right now, there are some downlights in the underside of the soffit, there will be pedestrian light, you know, at all the entry points, there's going to be a dedicated downlight, but again, it'll be a focused light beam, it's not going to spill off the edge of the site. Eventually, we can provide photometrics, that that's going to be helpful for folks to understand that, along with all the product cuts.
Is that 24/7?
Well, that's, that, I'm going to let Amy address some of the issues that, some of the other buildings in terms of when the lights are going to go on and off. I don't think the intention is to leave any of these lights on all night. I mean, obviously, you know, if there's a basketball game and it's 4:00 in the afternoon in the winter and it's, you know, it's dark out, you're going to see the lights from inside. You know, the gymnasium itself, the upper clear story panels, it's not a clear glass, it's a translucent panel, so yes, there'll be a little bit of glow, but you're not going to have necessarily direct light. The, and I think, you know, I'll try and go through the list and, correct me if I missed anything, but the number of trees, we're probably putting, I'm, don't hold me to the number, but we can do a count between what's proposed to be taken down, but there's probably a two-to-one replacement.
I counted over 50 on your site plan when I...
Yeah, there's an awful lot of trees and landscaping and planting beds going back in. Some of the existing pine trees, especially when they get isolated and they're not in a group, they become less stable to wind conditions. So the pine trees, they're on the left side of the existing driveway that goes up to the Anson Building, those are intended to come down, but they're getting replaced. If you look at the site plan, there's new trees going up along, scaling trees, and there's quite a bit of trees along View Street, both at the street level, but also in that sort of lower courtyard areas. Again, trying to get a layered effect and a nice streetscape if we can. We did, Don and I did talk about the stone wall. Again, our intention at the time was the grades don't really work to keep the stone wall, but we were going to try and salvage and repurpose the existing larger blocks that are on top of the stone wall. During construction, obviously, it's an occupied campus, so, you know, the safety of the kids is very important, as well as the community as a whole. So the entire site is going to be isolated with construction fencing. A lot of the parking for the construction vehicles is going to have to happen somewhat remotely from this. The existing driveway loop that goes through the main heart of the campus right now is not going to continue as a one-way loop during the construction months, it's going to have, it's going to have to be a two-way loop and back out the entrance, because we, again, we need to, we need to keep the dining hall open and access for the students and the staff during the school year. So we have to have, we have a way that we've worked out with a contractor, how we would fence it off and get an access down to the student center, both from the Anson Building, the upper school, upper area, and the dormitories, which are farther up the hill.
It would be, it would be certainly fair to ask that there be no construction vehicle parking on View, Bond, or Prospect?
That's certainly the intent. That's absolutely the intent. One of the things we did discuss with the school is, they exist across the street from the main campus is one of the ball, or one of the ballfields. One of the earlier goals for that was to create a new, eventually, some tennis courts, the field is somewhat underutilized, but during this project, they're anticipating using that ballfield for some of the parking, as well as some of the new areas they'll have at the top of the hill once the dormitory's completed and online. So the idea is to not have any parking on View Street in the area there's construction of this, other than what might be behind the fence in the driveway loop.
Going back just briefly to the lighting question, and this is probably more directed to Amy, but what would, what would be expected, what would be kind of the latest you can envision something being open in that, in that building? What's the latest school-sponsored activity where you would have lights on in that building?
Hi, good evening. So our kids that live with us, the 30 or 40 that do, they go to bed at 8:00, so they're little. They go to bed really early. You know, we, our middle school games that the kids play, it's part of our school day. So, you know, a team may show up at, you know, if they're coming from, you know, closer in, may show up around 3:30. Games would be over by 5:00 or 6:00, because my teachers have to be done for the day, too, at that point.
So, the reason why I ask that is, while we can't control the, you know, once in a while where you have something that goes late, it's sometimes beneficial and sometimes at least a safety net to the neighbors to set extreme, you know, extreme timeframes, where you say, you know, school, you know, school-sponsored events and lights to be off by 11:00 PM or 10:00 PM, or whatever the number is. If you can set that upper limit, it just helps everyone know that it's not, you know, midnight and lights are on, something like that. Is that, is that ever a scenario where that gets problematic for your school?
I don't think so. I mean, our events, they're for little kids, they're done, I mean, they got to be in bed. I could see us maybe having a parent party at some point, we'd want to use the gym, that might go to 11:00 or so, but I can't see beyond that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it was more like interior, like, security lighting, you mentioned like the translucent panels at the top, so that whether or not, you know, how much of a glow or what time they're expected to have.
Yeah, I think that can, that can all be set as well. I mean, the intention, at least from our earlier discussions, is, you know, once the academic day in the building is over, it's not going to be lit at all at night. There are going to be occupancy sensors and things like that and security in the building, so if somebody was to, you know, break in or be in there, you know, when they're not supposed to be, then the lights, the emergency lights will come on. But it's not intended to be illuminated all night. The dormitory may be, you know, I know there's some concern about the View Street dormitory with some of the lights on the porch, and I think the school is trying to address that. But this, this building, again, it's not, the students aren't in it 24 hours a day, so when it's not in use, it'll be, it'll be dark. But again, we need to, like, in the pedestrian areas, we need to keep it safe for everybody as well. So, and again, but...
Yes, yep, ambient lighting, and then...
Right.
Yeah, whether or not there's a different tone.
Right.
And then you mentioned, it's like, they're working with the school, you know, the existing Anson Building, if there's lighting off the, I know we're, you know, focusing on the new athletic building, but if there's lighting off the Anson Building, it make, you know, everything's dark sky compliant, but maybe it's just...
Well, yeah, and I'm not, I'm not familiar with what's on the back of some of those other buildings that we weren't involved in, but it's something we have discussed. We could look, there are other emergency lights, and you can, you can, you can buy different types of lenses on them, which have like a long throw or a short throw, so if there are other problematic areas, I'm sure the school would be willing to work, and we can get our engineer on board to potentially try and solve some of those issues as well.
I mean, certainly, if it's a problem, it's just being a good neighbor, if you guys can just, because we're talking, if we're talking about existing buildings, just handle that separately.
Right.
Solve that problem. Judge Hillman did mention, and I apologize calling you mister earlier, Judge Hillman did mention the trash, which is there next to the dining commons on View Street.
Yes.
The, the, the expected amount of trash can be handled in that same area?
Yeah, if it, and if it was problematic, I think they would just have to increase the frequency with which they get picked up. But again, it's not, it's not like a dining hall or one of the other buildings might have a large component. I mean, this is...
I mean, all you're going to have is normal, like, school trash, right?
Right. Right.
Could you show the, I guess the intersection, there's been a couple comments regarding, it's like, site dis, issue, or is that one of the...
Are you talking about...
The right there in the corner, on the right, right there?
Those bushes? If we can, if those are, if those are problematic, can we, can we take those back two or three feet?
I already did, because I heard that from you at the meeting. So I did cut it back, I wrote you a letter asking if it was enough, so it's not enough.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't get back to you. They trimmed them, but they really need just to be taken out. You can see the cantilever out towards the intersection?
Yep.
That's not an optical illusion, they, they really are cantilevered out, so your nose is on Prospect Street, and they are rock, they come rocking down that hill.
I'm fine to take those out.
Yeah, thank you, that would be, that would, that would, that would be great.
Thank you very much. We had...
Also in that corner, is that also, we're talking about the water or the pooling of the water in that particular area, is there some drainage issue or a tie-in, like, maybe scooched a little to the right? I think there's a drain, but I think it...
I'm sorry, I missed your, what are you saying?
There's some runoff, I guess, as they poop.
Yeah, well, there's a couple of things. Right now, the city of Pittsburgh is separating, most of you probably know this, but they're separating the storm and the sanitary sewage. And what was there originally was like a granite drainage swale on the Applewild, well, I think it was on both sides, but I know what the neighbors are talking about, it's really washed out. DPW's been working with us and our team to, the new proposal, what I understand from DPW, they're going to be working from the top of View Street down to about Bond Street this construction season, and then next year, they're going to be working sort of from Bond Street down to Prospect Street. So all of the, you know, the runoff issues that are happening on the two swales on either side is going to be addressed as they isolate the storm and the sanitary sewage, and, you know, the roadway is regraded and new curbing installed. So that, that issue should, should go away, not necessarily this summer, but by the time the DPW gets through the, their second construction year.
And I think you and I take it for granted, because we deal with it all the time, but just so the neighbors know, there is a stormwater mitigation plan as part of this, that our DPW is going to review as well and make sure everything looks okay, so that the requirement is that the situation is the same or better than, and I assume it's better than current existing conditions. We did have a conversation about mechanicals. I wanted to go back to this, because I wanted to see if it was what I, what I picture is right. So this rooftop area where you have some of your mechanicals, there's, there's an actual shielding wall that runs around it?
Yes.
Okay. So there, so there, not only are they on the roof, but there's, there's a wall that protects sound projection from...
Right. Yeah, so there's, there's a few units on the roof. What's shown there, there are two units, there's what's called a dedicated outside air unit over on that side. A little bit farther down, it's sort of in parallel with that, there'll be two units for the gymnasium, which we've added another screen wall. And the idea is it's, it's, we've got the units five feet away from the upper wall to keep this as tight as we can, and then the screen goes up above it with the ideas that it's going to, it's going to force the sound up and not laterally out to the neighbors. One of the other units that was above the slope roof on the left, we've moved that to an indoor unit, and then the pool unit is actually between the high volume of the pool roof and the gymnasium roof.
Right, right in here?
Correct.
So in the valley in between?
Right.
So that'd be protected on each side, plus it looks like an even higher wall there between the abutters and...
The gym roof is a little bit higher than the pool roof.
Yeah.
Question, just for clarification. When we met this week, and I couldn't be wrong, I believe that you were, you were showing a different top-down view, and there were two units on that roof, the lower roof up front. Is that true and untrue?
No, that is, that is true. These renderings were submitted about a month ago. What you saw the other day, the laser works there, it doesn't like the screen.
Doesn't work on the screen.
So...
Yeah, right where your, right where your cursor is, there are two units for the gymnasium.
Okay, those are our primary concern.
Right, and those, but those are behind a screen wall.
Do we understand...
Oh, hi, it's a screen.
It's going to be about eight feet.
I'm about 30 feet up the hill from you, so they're below me, I'm just looking at them.
Well, I know, I...
Eight feet? They're going to be eight feet.
Those are our primary concern, because they have three bedrooms that are very close to mine, and so are we, you know? And, you know, probably the top topic for the neighborhood, right, is the noise, the light, and the visual aspect of it. And, you know, we, again, we wholeheartedly appreciate what the school's doing and the investment. This is a multi-multi-million dollar investment of 50,000 square feet. We would hope that the school would really take some serious consideration and some accommodations on how it's going to impact the neighbors directly. Just going to kind of leave it at that. Because again, we're going to look at this directly.
Right.
We're not 300 feet away, this is us, this is our everyday, and it's our primary investment in line. So kind of just doing this doesn't really...
Does it, you mentioned, it's got to be, the screening is eight feet?
Yep.
In height?
Right. We can provide, we've, we've updated the 3D renderings. I can provide new renderings to show you from eye level. Unfortunately, for the folks that are farther up the hill, no matter what we do, you're going to be looking down on this building or any building, just like they look down on the existing gymnasium building. There's not much I can do with that, other than to try and screen things and buffer things and direct the sound upwards.
Is there any...
Could you put it on the front side? Could you put it over here, so you can look at it, and I don't have to for my house?
Well, I don't think you'll see it, it'll be potentially behind an eight-foot, on top of the roof, behind an eight-foot screen on that, it's, and it's more like, so it's really about maybe the more the audibleness, I was going to say.
Can you, can you provide a CAD for review that accurately shows both the slope and where all of the equipment placement will go? Because it's, I mean, there will be more than two machines.
You're right, and again, these renderings were submitted to the, about a month ago. So, and we have up, I, one of the first things we did when we got our revised mechanical drawings is have our design team update the 3D model to be able to show and look at what the perspectives are from ground level and eye level and what you would see. I'd be happy to try and provide that. We've made some efforts to try and push them around. I was able to get our engineers to delete one of the units, I was able to get our engineers to move the transformer away from the site. We added the screen wall for the gymnasium units. Unfortunately, this, the equipment needs to go on the roof, and unfortunately, your house, some of these houses are, you know, 20, 30, 40 feet, whatever, vertically higher, especially if you're on your third floor looking down at it.
Is there an example of what the screening would look like?
I can provide it. It's basically like an open louver, it's horizontal, prefinished aluminum slats, and the equipment's behind it. I believe it's on the architectural CAD elevations that are in here, but it's not, it's not on that older version of the rendering.
And they're designed to mitigate the sound?
Yes, and we've done this before, especially when we have, there are acoustical blankets that can go on the side walls of the upper walls, which helps direct the sound vertically instead of horizontally out. So that's something we can do on the inside face of the, the screen panels.
No, I thought I saw it somewhere, one of them.
Do you know what, which one it's labeled, panel type what?
If, again, it may not even be on, I don't think it's on these, because I think this is for the, the units.
I would just say provide that, so we can see what it looks like. What was next? They had talked about the elevations, I mean, obviously, you know, I think it's a very good-looking building, but I know that there's a difference between people who like contemporary and modern versus, you know, antique and classic. It's, you know, I, I, I don't know how you want to respond to that question.
Well, it's very difficult, I think, when you've got a building of this size to make it look like, you know, a single-family residence, just because of the shape and the volume of the spaces that are within it. So what we've tried to do is, at least on the main facade on View Street, we've kind of layering the materials, so there's a stone base to try and anchor it, and then there's a horizontal section of panels, and there's a continuous horizontal sort of band of the clear story windows. And then we've used a variety of different panel types, textures, and colors, along with a wood look aluminum panel that's on sort of either end bracketing this, and we also, you know, we stepped the side walls of the squash court and the other end of the building back. The other thing to keep in mind, which I didn't mention, is obviously this building needs to comply with the new zoning, so the buildings are actually farther back than existing buildings that are on the site, and also the, this was a question, I think, that might have come up earlier, the ridge of the existing gymnasium, the peak roof of the ridge, our building's actually about five feet lower than that, because we're digging this thing into the hillside as much as we can. Now, it's obviously longer, but it's... Now, it's obviously longer, but it is actually lower than the peak of the existing building.
Okay. And, of course, overall question regarding the parking. So, is the number of students, enrollment expected to change? And/or is it more the parking for events? It seems to be like...
Well, there's a couple, there's event, like when it's grandparents' days or a special event, the additional 12 spaces we're providing probably is not going to handle that. But there will be more parking available up the hill with the new dormitory. And then, like I said, during the construction, all the construction vehicles are intended to either be up the hill by the dorm or across the street in the existing ballfield area. So, there's a net increase, and the student enrollment isn't increasing as part of this. It's more about, you know, replacing the delinquent facilities that the school has.
We did discuss, I, certainly, I can't remember if it came up with the dorms or with this, but we did discuss at one point about EDDF, about, you know, using the area across the street for overflow parking, particularly for events.
Yes, we did discuss that at our meeting with this.
And my expectation would be, because you had mentioned in this, and I think before I mentioned tennis courts, if that ever happens, that the tennis courts be as far away as you can because you have to maintain overflow parking in that field.
Right. The actual design that we came up with originally was exactly that. The four tennis courts were at the farthest end of the site where it's the flattest, and then the parking was closest to the street. We are going, not as a part of this project, but we have been looking at exploring adding an additional parking area there. It won't be part of this project, so we can't really talk on how many, but we had somewhere in the neighborhood of 40-plus spaces being able to be added over there. The complication with that is there's one little finger of wetland that comes up, sort of parallel with Prospect Street, which we'd have, you know, there was no way we could get through, you know, the conservation and maintain the overall schedule we're trying to do. But that is something the school's been looking at. They've asked us to look into some additional parking across the street.
I think for the sake of, you know, having a facility like this, especially while it's new, where you're going to have, you know, you're going to want to showcase it, I'm sure, as you should. And you're going to have, you know, events, and people are going to come, and, you know, you need a space where, okay, you have to park across the street because I think it has to be impressed upon every visitor that you should not be parking on View, Bond, or Prospect.
Yeah. And I think, there's a couple, I know the school's been already directing their staff not to park on View Street. I don't know how successful that is. But there's also some concerns with getting appropriate signage from the police department on the, on the street there. So, it's a student, you know, it's a school zone, 20 mile an hour max, because I know, as others have mentioned, I've been there enough when you see people flying down the hill way more than 20 miles an hour. And it's a safety thing, because the kids are still crossing over currently to use the ballfields across the street. And/or crossing over View Street to get to the lower school. So, I think we're working with, trying to work with the city and get additional signage and flashing lights, potentially, on Prospect Street, where the two existing crosswalks are on Prospect and View.
The only other question I had, which was kind of added to what Michael had said, was the, he said, any other mechanicals? Are there any other, other than what we talked about today and what's shown on the plan, condenser units, you know, air recovery or whatever, is there any other mechanicals on-site that we should know about, other than that generator pad you talked about moving?
No. No, the transformer's going to, we're moving that farther away from the street. That's going to move more inboard. But what we can do is we can provide, I can provide you, you know, the mechanical roof plan, which shows all of the units, because there will be other things on there. You're right. There are going to be exhaust fans and things, you know, they're, you know, two feet by two feet. But what I've asked everybody to do, and I usually try and do, is we try and keep them as inboard as possible, so they have the least impact from the, from, you know, public ways and other folks' views. But there will be some, that's, some that are behind the screen walls won't necessarily be an issue. There really is not going to be a lot on the roof of the pool and the, the pool and the gymnasium. Some of the other, you know, we're obviously going to have vent stacks for toilet rooms and things like that, but that's, you know, those are small projections, not a big piece of a rooftop equipment. But we can provide a drawing that highlights what's on the roof.
Is it chlorine-based?
Yes.
Is there potential for a lot of odor to be emanating from that, where you might be able to look at some type of either carbon filter or something in the exhaust?
We, we have a pool consultant onboard that's been working with us to design that system. And we did look at a couple of different, or the client looked at a couple of different solutions, but it's going to, it's a chlorine system. I'll have to explore his drawings a little more thoroughly to see if there's any carbon issues, you know, and carbon filters to help with that.
We do have, I mean, obviously, state code has, has, so, has odor mitigation policies. That's a board of health thing, but that's certainly something that you should be aware of. That you should be aware of. I didn't mean you. I just said it looking at you, I didn't mean it that way.
And anything they could bring also regarding the noise and what those panels could mitigate for potential noise from the roof? The decibels? What would be expected? Yes, Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, ma'am, chair.
Can you just come up, you got to come up to him, Mike, Mike. Otherwise, people can't hear you.
I don't want to repeat, but I do want to repeat. I just would like the board and the applicant to really look at some alternative places to mount the units that are going to be visible for myself and the neighbor. You can put as much lipstick on the pig as you want, they're going to be there. It's going to be a big box on top of a 50,000-square-foot box. You know, it's an Amazon building, right? They've done a great job. Again, we're in full support. We're just asking for some accommodations as director butters, you know, to make this all work. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan, can I ask you a question? Is it, because of the layout, is it, is it not possible to move those front, the ones we're talking about on the front left of, I already took the screen down, but the ones we were talking about on the front left of the building to, like, for instance, let me share my screen again. Like, for instance, so, we were talking about some being here, right?
Correct.
To put it where you have the pool system, the exhaust system you have here, or over in this area, or even on this side, where they're not along residences?
My goal originally was to have all three units between the pool and the gym roofs. There's just not enough space to fit all three. Could we look at flipping them to the other side, so it's a little bit more inboard? Yes, we could. It's still going to need a screen system, Ronna, because I don't think people are also going to want to be able to be driving up View Street and see these units up on that roof. But I could look at...
From the front, yeah.
So, I think your best bet is on this front right wall here. If you can't keep them behind the building, is put them on this front right wall here, and then you have a screen there. That way, you won't be able to see them from up the hill because the roof of the building is going to project over it.
Right. Yeah, that's true. The gym roof would conceal that.
So, I think that that's something you need to explore. I mean, I think that that's a small concession to make, given the, you know, the scale of the project.
Where are you proposing?
Front right of the building, on the dining common side. This roof right here, which would be directly opposite you, the residents on View Street. I think that's the only place they can go, to be honest with you, Mike. I mean, other than these, which these are screened pretty well because there's a big projection here.
Or even in that back corner there.
Over here? Yeah. That's...
Because that gives the visibility.
That's certainly a possibility. I think that this one you can do, plus you can make it look like, with that front screening, you won't, you can make that look decorative, so you won't notice, you won't notice it from lower view and Prospect, because the gray change is so great. So, as long as you make that, you know, the sound deadening, the privacy screening you have look nice, and you're going to want it to look nice, it, you know, it shouldn't matter to, it shouldn't matter to anyone. You're going to have to do the screening on the north side anyway, if you did it up here, or west side, whatever it is. I think that, I mean, quite honestly, I think that that works out well for you.
Considering, I'm not sure if there's any windows on that side.
There are no windows on that side.
No. There isn't. I think that's a good suggestion, and it's, engineering-wise, it puts the units where they want to, they want to be on the short side, the way the mechanical wants to work. Coming in the other way and doesn't work, but we could look at putting it there.
I mean, even if you want to put them all together on that wing, because you're going to spend money to make that look nice, you could do, you know, you could do a stone facade wall up there, or you could do, you know, whatever. You could, you could make that privacy screening look as nice as you want, and you can make it almost a focal point of the side of that building. And it's kind of kills two birds with one stone. You have to, you have to screen them on the other side anyway, but if you move them there, at least, you know, it's further away from the residences and that much chance of hearing anything, and certainly that much chance of seeing anything.
Right.
What would be the proposed timeline?
Well, like the previous applicant, yesterday.
I had June 1st in my notes when we met two months ago.
Yeah, I know. Well, here's, here's what we're, we've had a conversation with the building inspector. The idea is to try and demolish the existing buildings over the course of the summer when the campus is unoccupied, the students aren't there. So, very shortly, the contractor will be filing for demolition permit to take the existing buildings down. And then there's probably a couple of months of site prep and other work they're going to have to do. So, the real construction probably wouldn't start, I'm guessing, maybe September, October. Maybe a little bit before that, depends how quickly they can take the other buildings down and do the site prep.
What's the, you might, I apologize, it's spaced out, you might answer this. What's the total construction time?
Well, if I had my way and the contractor had went their way, we're probably looking 16 to 18 months total. 18 on the outside, but obviously, we want to get it up and running as soon as we can and restore the site.
So, you know, one year to start, two years to complete, that gives you that cushion window?
Yeah.
And obviously, if there's delays, you come back and we'll talk. It's just that way we make sure things don't continue on forever.
Do any board members have any questions to ask at this time, or want some additional feedback? Anything? Anybody online? Elena or Alex? Amanda's here?
None from me at the moment.
Okay.
None from me either.
Just so we know, procedurally, she can't vote, though. She wasn't here at the opening and the hearing.
We've...
Good to know.
You have a question? Yes? You may come up.
I just want to restate that the neighbors really do know that the gym will happen, and we want the school to succeed. And here in front of you is our only chance to get some relief from some of these really legitimate concerns about the enjoyment of our homes and the value of our homes. Hey, why not a green roof?
Just talk to, talk to the board.
Oh, I can't talk to you. Maybe they could consider a green roof. It just came into my mind, and I thought it sounded neat. I would like to show you the lighting, if I can. I don't know if I can show you a photo.
Okay. You could also send...
Tell you what, pull up, pull up an email and hand me your phone. I'll put my email address in, and I can pull it up on the screen, so everyone can see it.
Yep.
I just don't need to give out my email address to everyone here, so. Thank you. Okay. You can just send it, and then I'll pull it up on here. Let's see.
You can also look at the landscaping plan.
While I'm waiting for that to come in, what do you want me to pull up?
Landscaping plan?
Okay.
I think it talked about some more like trees or anything going along on the neighbor's side.
I already had it up, I'll pull it up right here.
There we go.
Oops, sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm trying to, I got to pause the screen and then go do what I'm going to do. All right.
Yeah, I'm going to blow that up to the left and the neighbors on that side.
Hold on, I'm trying, I was trying to do something.
Sorry.
That's okay. What do you, what would you like to say?
Yes.
This front left corner here?
Yep.
This is the dorm.
Yes, but it looks like there's going to be some landscaping seed to the left. That's missile plans home there, so that looks like there'll be some, those new shrubs to be planted there, and evergreens. Do you know how tall those are? So, like the arborvit-y privacy?
The intent was along the left property line of the View Street dorm was to plant that to try and help mitigate some of the view from further up the hill down at the roof there. But it, you know.
Is there anything along the back line right now?
We can do a wall contact.
Oh, okay.
Okay. If we can just get off this for a minute, I got that email, you can see the pictures. All right. All right. And, yeah, you can best describe what we're looking at.
You know, this is midnight on a weeknight, looking out my bedroom window. It's really, really bright. That's the dormitory right there, floodlights, and that one is lights from not even the dormitory. That's a security light with the green and the brightness on the left, about 200 feet away, and then some other light to the right of it that's also like behind the dorm. They are really bright, and, you know, it's true, the kids are little in the dorm, but I live there, they don't go to bed at 8:30. I can tell you which ones stay up in their room dancing and stuff like that. They're all right there. But it's not the one, it's not the awake time stuff. I have absolutely no problem and no complaint as a neighbor about lights or noise from people living in the dorm next to me who are awake. It's actually not that. It's just like lights left on 24/7. Lights in the stairwell, that's what's, that bright one on the left is the stairwell, 24/7. The dorm's been open almost two years, and those lights have been on since it turned on. Like, literally, they haven't been off for a moment. And I'm just really worried that it'll just end up being the same with the gym. You know, it's very bright.
Okay.
Absolutely. We are very, the board is always very cognizant about, you know, lighting issues, and that's why we talk about dark-skY compliant lights and things like that. It's a requirement of theirs, and, you know, if they become problematic, you can approach, you start with the building inspector and say something, and then you can approach the planning department, and we can see if we can rectify the issue. Hopefully, the issues with the dorm can be rectified just with the change of lighting. And, you know, those, I can tell by looking at them, especially the porch light, it's just, it's probably just a regular, you know, 100-watt bulb or something. It's not a, you know, a downward-facing dark-skY light, probably, so.
Something could be a little softer and be in for that. Could you be able to bring something back to the next meeting with the plan or anything to address that, you think? For the, yeah, for the lighting, as well as, and we'll be talking, and we're going to be bringing back some more information regarding the mechanicals, location, the placement, and the screening, samples like that. It's like we all talk about dark-skY compliant, and it's like, what is that exactly? And the different levels of dark-skY versus a parking lot or on the side of a building or porch, or like you mentioned, the illumination and the factors.
I mean, because, because the end result of dark-skY compliant lighting, because the end result of what they provide us, other than showing us, this is what we're going to do, and it's not going to be a problem to the neighbors, because it's not going to change, I don't think it particularly matters. I mean, yes, it should be a requirement, and yes, you know, show us photometrics so that it's not a problem that we have lights ever need to be moved, or whatever, then we can mitigate that, but it's not going to change anything as far as where this ends up going.
Right. Not the locations of them, but just where the...
No, I just meant voting, I just meant via vote about voting tonight.
Oh, I thought we were coming back with information, so be at our next meeting.
But I don't think anything changes anything, other than, yes, there are things that are going to be required that'll be permit conditions, but other than, other than a review, I don't think that they change a vote and they change anything that we're going to do today. I do have a list of things that we've already talked about. And there are some things that are requirements, but, again, nothing changes, nothing changes the end result. And I certainly...
Well, the end result is maybe can they move the mechanicals? That seems to be like a very big...
That would be a permit, that would be a permit condition, I think, yeah, to find a way to move them.
Well, they have to verify that they can do that, if that's possible.
I mean, if you're starting demo, does it... I mean, if you're starting demo, does it particularly matter if we go to June for another meeting?
Is that... Is that, that's why I asked about the timeline of the, you know, the...
Right, if demo is going to take three or four months, then it might not particularly matter.
No, I, I think it, it would probably behoove all of us if we continue it for another meeting, and we'll provide some of the additional information that was requested. We can have John, our engineer, run the photometrics, we can update whatever drawings and provide them materials and cut sheets that everyone's looking for.
Perfect.
And again, I, I think just conceptually flipping the mechanical units to the other side of the gym, that will work mechanically.
Will work.
So I don't have, I don't think that's going to, I mean, I haven't obviously talked to my engineer yet, but how it was zoned and facing, that should work.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll need to confirm that with them as well.
And, yes, and I'll mention, like, I know you brought up the landscaping line, but see, and if that's even like off-site, it's on the dormitory property, whether the timing of that could be done, when the timing of that could be done sooner rather than after or towards the end of construction, or just trying to figure that out.
Okay.
Other portions like that. Anything that'll help mitigate that in between on the construction and other things like that, so.
Okay.
Just think about the, just the timing of it. Yes. One more, one more, Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes, just a question regarding demolition and construction. Will we have weekends off, or will it just be a five-day week process?
So we don't control that? The Board of Health, the Building Department does? Because that's not part of our permit. That's not part of the planning board, we'd site plan. So whatever the city code is for hours of operation, I don't know off the top of my head, but it's on, it's on the city website. I could look it up for you if you want me to. And certainly can call the Building Department if there's, you know, major issues with timing and whatever. But that might even start before we're even done this, because they don't need us for that. That, that they can just pull a permit to demo a building.
That's right.
Yes, and I appreciate you answered a lot of questions this evening, and a lot of questions were asked. Is a large project very significant development and investment in the area, in the city? So, and we appreciate everybody's efforts towards this, appreciate your outreach also to the community, which is great, in trying to mitigate this even in like ahead of time, any, any of these issues. And that's why you asked whether or not, if, if an additional, like, the month would be okay to just bring this back and get everybody just, everybody's on, all the, all the outstanding questions have been answered in regards to that and move forward.
Can I just, one more suggestion, just to smooth everything, because we have a whole month now to get everything done. If, probably just touch base with city engineering and see if they're okay with stormwater, if they have any major changes. It just helps...
We hadn't, we hadn't heard any comments back from them yet. Hi. I didn't even know you, I'm sorry, Anthony, I didn't even know you were involved in this, so.
I thought you were just waiting your turn for the next...
Nope, we're doing the civil part.
Okay.
But I didn't want to interject too much. So, we submitted our plans separately to the DPW for their review. They have their team of engineers working on the sewer separations. They sent us back one of their draft versions of what they see on View Street. So I think we were both kind of working independently of each other, not knowing what each was doing. And so, I think throughout the course of this, there will be continued coordination so that our stuff is going to fit with, with the city stuff. So, we are, we have that open line of communication going on now, and I expect that to continue.
Okay.
Is all your stormwater going into the newly separated system, or do you do any, is there any detention basins or?
Yep, there's a, there's a stormwater basin, a bio-retention area that we've proposed where that parking lot was originally proposed.
So near the, near the, the lowermost entrance to the loop?
Yep, exactly. So we're, we're having an area there to collect stormwater, both existing pavement and, and proposed, to try and, well, we have, the Pittsburgh has their current stormwater regulations now, where we have to treat one inch runoff. So, we have that. That was kind of where it needed to go, the low spot of the, of the site. So, yes, we have that there with an overflow tying into the existing apewild stormwater. And then we are tying in some roof drainage and some other yard drains along View Street into the new, the new View Street stormwater system that will be going in. So that's the, those are the things that we'll continue to coordinate with the city throughout their design and our design process.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any board member have any other feedback, or would like any additional information for them to come back?
I'll sit.
Our June meeting is the 25th. Make a motion to continue to our June meeting.
Second?
Motion was made with the second. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose. Roll call vote. Let's see. Alain?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Oh, she's refused.
Sorry, she recused herself. Paula, aye. And Amanda was, didn't withstand the...
Between now and the next meeting, if you watch the first few minutes that you missed, you can vote next meeting on, oh, you missed, the mullen rule.
Yes, and so I will take, since Amanda is here for that aspect of it, are you, are you also aye, Amanda?
Aye.
All right, great. Continued.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for your time.
Oh, Judge Holman, too. Let us know if you can't, if you want to see anything updated next month, let us know if you can't get in there, because I did click on that link, and it brings you to our document center.
Oh, you cut and paste.
So on the agenda, when you click up, when, if, like, I cut and paste to that link, or you can click on it, it brings you to dates. You just click the May date, then you click hearings, then you click Apewild, and all our stuff's on, all our meeting stuff's been online for a year and a half now. So, it's, as soon as we get it, Chantel puts it up pretty much right away. That's not, no. And if you have problems, call the planning office. They'll get you set up. Okay.
All right, next, this evening, we have a site plan review modification. City of Pittsburgh proposes a modification of an approved site plan for the public library to address design changes to accommodate floodplain requirements at 610 Main Street.
All right.
Nobody?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm going to pull up the list here and see.
No one's got their hand. Wait a minute, there's no one here?
I think they're virtual.
Oh.
I got hand raised. Yep. Mr. Hoover, it's all yours. Just, there you go.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm Jeff Hoover from Tapa Architects, Project Architects for the Pittsburgh Library renovation and expansion. I, we submitted some drawings for you all to, to sort of track the changes that we've made.
So Jeff, I have 2023-57 zoning site plan, I have revised zoning site plan, and I have 41224 revised site plan set. Which one do you want?
Well, the 424 revised site plan set would probably be, have all of the information on it. What I'd like to know is if I could share with you, you know, a more, more pleasing graphic representation of that information with a PowerPoint.
Absolutely. I'm going to promote you now, and as soon as you get promoted, you can... Okay, you're, you're a panelist now, so you should be able to share your screen. Let me just stop sharing my screen. And I'm not sharing my screen, so it's all yours. What's that?
Does he know he's muted?
Uh, let me see.
Didn't know I was muted. I'm sorry. Now you should be seeing the zoning site plan, colored version of the site plan. And this is the, the previous version. And what I'd like to do initially is just sort of toggle back and forth between this and the proposed, just to sort of highlight the nuance of the change. So, I clicked, we can see that there's been a little change. I'll go back, begin to sort of like go back, toggle back and forth between these. This is the current proposed right now, back, and you see a few subtle areas of change. And I'm going to walk through each one, each one of the areas, but I thought it might be useful to start with that as, as, you know, the basic, to make the point that very little has changed with the site plan. Well, we're raising the addition to, to lift it out, higher out of the floodplain. But now, let me just walk through what the, the changes are, based on the summary that we sent earlier, and that is part of the record documents. To start on the left-hand side of the site, the white, the, the west side on the left, the, the circle shows an area of change right there, where we have a slightly smaller green area and snow storage area. So, and that's because we've reconfigured the, the turnaround for a, an accessible van in that area. So, we previously had accommodated an accessible van turnaround there, but now we have, because we've raised the floor of the addition, there's a little stair that we have added here to get, to make our egress down to grade, and that stair encroaches on the, in the previous turnaround spots. We have a, a little bit of an adjustment right there. There's another red circle has appeared showing another stair doing the same thing on the other side of the building. One of the other changes we've had to the site plan is incorporating these transitions down to grade in a, in areas where we were previously were sloping. Now we're just doing, we're, we're doing some steps in places where we didn't have steps, we're, we're adding them. Another area of change is at the Newton Street entrance. We've reconfigured the positioning of the vestibule and, and, and the, and the ramp. And actually, the, the entry point is, is about 18 inches lower than it was before, so there are fewer steps, shorter ramp, and the ramp is now on the south side of the vestibule, and previously it was on the north side. It's just slightly more accommodating composition, I think, with that subtle rearrangement. Then, another element, and you'll see, has changed in the site plan is the generator. It actually is a, a smaller footprint now, because it represents the, the actual generator that has been submitted by the general contractor. So it's more representative of what is actually happening. And before, we had sort of a placeholder on site, which was a bit larger. And then, we've repositioned where this curb cut is from the parking lot onto the sidewalk. And previously, it had been roughly in the midpoint along the, the south facade here, and now it's right at the corner, and that will be more convenient access for deliveries pulling into that hatched area for a 30-foot box truck. And the handicap parking spot associated with that is just here, so the connection between those two points is good, especially for, you know, for a staff person or somebody visiting, someone in the administrative areas on the lower floor of the library. That spot had previously been, been directly across from where the curb cut was, but the curb cut was farther along the facade of the building. Another small change is where we had previously had landscape area here, now it's just a hatched snow storage area, and that had to do with reconfiguring the compensatory storage areas for stormwater management on site. And the grading plan will show that there's some very slight changes to the actual grading in the area of the generator, as it works its way back to the, to the face of the building. One other thing I should say about the generator, it is actually now, as opposed to being on a pad on grade, it too is raised up to get it out of the, the flood zone. So it has, there's a steel superstructure that the generator sits on instead of it being placed right on grade. We had previously shown an entrance vestibule at this location, but really is a result of redefining the parking area, which we had done in coordination with the planning board, to reconfiguring it to just be staff parking, based on sort of the difficulty of navigating such a, sort of a long, narrow spot. Give it over to staff who can become familiar with the configuration on it, working there every day. Because that's staff only, there isn't any real need to put an attractive entranceway into that courtyard from outside. And so, we eliminated that, that vestibule as an arrival point. There still is a door, of course, to get out into the courtyard from inside, and then the patrons will go back inside to egress ultimately, although there, or to depart, I should say. For egress, there still remains the egress gate from the courtyard as it was before.
Just to clarification, because I remember the conversation well, that parking area is for library staff and accessible parking?
True, absolutely right. There's a van.
So the sign is supposed to say, "library staff and accessible parking," because we talked about there being a sign at the entrance there, so that people don't use it for parking. So I just want to make sure that you're aware, because this, what you wrote was "library staff parking." That's not entirely accurate.
Well, it was one handicap.
Right, it's "library staff parking and accessible, and accessible parking," or, or an accessible space. I know there's some on the south side, too, but we talked about that one specifically, because there are going to be times where that's the easiest space for someone who's using, you know, wheelchair or whatever to get into the building.
Just wanted to make sure they could turn around.
Good point. Yeah, we will make sure we get the signage correct on that and label it accordingly. One other question, actually, that the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners asked when they were reviewing the, the changed site plan, and, and I didn't have a good answer for them, but I, but I would thought I would ask you and see what you said. They, they had requested a van accessible parking space on Newton Place, designating one of the four spots we have there that way. Is that something that, that the planning board would support?
Designate the space what?
As a, as a handicap parking spot.
The reason why, if you remember, I don't know if you remember our conversation, because we talked about that. I'm almost certain the DPW said, or the police said, "a street parking space can't be labeled accessible if it's not a fully accessible space." So, so because you need to, because you need to get out into traffic, I know we had the problem on Main Street in front of City Hall, and we had to, we had handicap spaces on Main Street, and we had to take them out, because they're not truly handicap accessible. So you might want to run that by FPD, the Police Department, but I'm pretty sure there's a, there's a reason in the code why it's not allowed, because we did start that way. You, I think we started with an accessible space there, and I'm pretty sure at EDTF, someone said you can't do that.
So that's, so you have...
Okay. That does sound familiar. Thank you for jogging my memory there. I didn't have notes to support that, but that does sound familiar. And I think that, with that explanation, the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners will be, will be fine. I'll convey that.
Because I think you said we wanted one there, and then someone told us we couldn't, so.
So there's one in the part, lower parking lot, and then there's one on the driveway?
Right.
Right. And we should probably point out, of course, there's, there's a lot of available parking just across Newton Place as, as well.
Jeff, can I ask you why, so this spot right here, the spot you have right next to the handicap space on the south, the Boulder Drive lot, it says "van accessible parking space"? Is that in the wrong spot? Is that arrow supposed to go to the handicap space?
Yes, that's true. That arrow is, is missing the spot.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make, because I was wondering why you would have a van accessible space in a non-handicap spot. Okay, so it's just going to the wrong spot. That's fine, that's fine. Did you have anything else before? I just had a comment, question.
Um, let me see. I think that was pretty much, well, it was, the other point was that we've reconfigured grading within the, within the courtyard, but I don't know that that really matters to the planning board. Yeah, that was it. So I'm just like, from, this is sort of the, the version of the plan as proposed at the moment, and then if we toggle back, you know, we can see what it was before. Again, just to sort of provide a graphic representation of, of the differences we're planning. So that's it.
So just so everyone can understand how we got from my notes, where last September, when we had this conversation before, and now, I, I, so, the gist of it was, you apply for a building permit, the building commissioner denied the permit because the, it was drawn to the, the, the proposed FEMA flood zone, which hasn't been accepted yet. So you had to go back and redo the plans to the current FEMA flood zone, which we know is going to change maybe as early as a few months from now. Is that all accurate?
That's not quite correct. We're still designing to the, the pending FEMA flood map, which will be released, we anticipate, in 2025, about the time the project is completed. The difference is that previously, we were seeking a letter of map amendment from FEMA demonstrating that the building footprint doesn't fall within the flood zone as defined on the pending maps. And it was determined that we, that probably was not the best way forward. So instead, we raised the floor elevation so that the building footprint is raised above the flood elevation. That was the change. And it made, again, subtle changes to the site plan because really sort of working, reworking grades and... sort of working, reworking grades and getting from those floor points down. We still need to get, I should say this again, we have since received a subsequent rejection of the building permit, as anticipated, based on the revised plans. The trajectory forward now is to go to the Board of, the Building Code Appeals Board, and we have that hearing scheduled for next week, and there we will make the case that it's the appropriate thing to be designing for the flood map that will become current when the building is done, rather than the 1981 flood maps.
This is a question that has no bearing on our approval or anything in this, but it's a question that's been asked of me many times, and quite honestly, I haven't heard it yet in a public hearing, so since we're here, I'll ask you. From when we approved in September with the design that was there now versus this design, does this redesign cost the City of Pittsburgh more money?
It probably will, because we're adding an elevator inside the building, a second elevator, and a flight of stairs, so that will probably incur additional costs. There are some things we're taking out of the project, like I mentioned, the vestibule that's no longer there, and sort of the bridge that connects it, so there will be some deletions, some additions, but we anticipate a net add.
Don't you already have your bid packet? Don't you know exactly how much it's going to be?
We have a bid package, correct, but the bid package is not based on the changes that we just discussed, it was based on the plan before the changes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so, I mean, we actually just Friday issued change order documents to the contractor for them to price this, so as soon as they come up with the numbers for the changes, we'll be fully aware of exactly what the cost is.
Okay. And for those of you that don't know, because I spent some time calling FEMA last week because I was curious, the, this has been, we're just about six months into the review comment period, which theoretically, anything could have happened already, or could happen any day now, but apparently, no one's in any hurry to approve the new flood map, so we could go through all this, and then they could approve the flood map, and it would be all for nearly nothing, but it's government life for you.
Awesome.
Yeah.
All right, any board questions? No, anybody online? And this is a public hearing, is there anybody online?
Right in front of you, Paula.
Oh, certainly, please come up to the podium.
Good evening, my name is Dave Klein, I work for the Archive of Opportunity, and I, this looks good. Our major concern is our parking area, which we share with the library right now. We currently have probably about 150 individuals come daily to our program, Monday through Friday, and it's a lot of handicap vehicles. So the parking on this looks good, I just want to really share our concern that if spaces or that area gets utilized for the library, we're basically going to be out of business in Pittsburgh. We just won't have a way to bring individuals into our programs. So, you know, our real stance is, you know, if there's additional parking needed, if we could look towards the other side, the parking area across Boulder Drive, and, you know, allow us to have access to that lot behind our building. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I know it was beyond the scope of this project, but that parking lot is like city parking lot that needs some attention and better access to that lot to make it more usable as well as ADA. At least the dumpster's going to be moved, so that'll free up a space.
Right.
Oh yeah, I don't know if you knew that, we'll move the dumpster out of your parking lot.
Dumpster's going to be, yeah, going to be on-site in the library spot. So is there anybody else?
No, no hands raised that I saw.
Do we have any department comments on the modification at all, or?
So let me go back and look, but I don't think I saw any. What's that?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think there was. I do know, as I'm sure you can understand, that everyone in the city was well aware of these changes. Yeah, no, I don't, nothing from Ryan, and then Jeff has some comments, no.
We have the driveway that was narrowed up to just be one-way onto Newton Place.
Right, that configuration remains exactly the same.
Was it off, or was it on Newton Place, the one-way?
What are we talking about?
The driveway, just not.
The access to the Boulder Drive lot?
No, the access off your lower parking lot to Newton Place. Is it going one direction?
Hold on, let me pull up, let me pull up the site plan, I mean.
I thought it was. Just that we're all clear.
Yeah, I remember the conversation now that you say that, but I don't remember how we, how it left off. There's no pavement markings on any of these site plans.
I think it's in the permit decision itself, so, but it's not marked in the site plan, that's why I wanted to, like, it should have an arrow or...
Yeah, and there should be, there's a sign to... All right, let me pull up the special permit then. I mean, the site plan. See what the condition says. What does this 610 main? Oh, thank you. Amy Ellen, is that?
Yeah, we've got the answer.
Okay, good, Amy.
Hi, this is Amy Ellen from Warner Larson, we're the landscape architects. I have in my notes from the October 24th Planning Board hearing that there is going to be a "do not enter" sign on the entrance to the Boulder Drive parking lot on Newton Place, so that would be exit only.
Okay. I know, you say Boulder Drive parking lot, I automatically think across the street, Yeah, I would just mention, I would just recommend that you put that, add it to the site plan, so it doesn't get missed in the end about the signage or the directional on the pavement.
Very good.
Any other questions or comments? All right, so we have before us, Paula, you all set?
Yeah, I'm good. Make a motion to close the public hearing. Oh, yeah.
And there was no DPW second and more comments, okay. Motion is made with a second to close the hearing. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose. Roll call vote. Amanda?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye. Discussion?
No, I'm good, I mean, the changes are, I mean, aside from being incredibly infuriating bureaucratic red tape, it is what it is, so I got nothing.
Okay, anybody else? All right.
Make a motion to approve the modification of the approved site plan for the Pittsburgh Public Library, 610 Main Street.
Second, and there's a second. Roll call vote. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose. Amanda?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Alex? Alex? No, Alex.
Sorry, guys, I'm having trouble with my computer, yeah, aye.
Okay, Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I guess I should stop sharing, huh?
Yeah, that's okay.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
We have our next hearing before us this evening. We have 347 Lunenburg Street Site Plan Review for the Paulino Auto Group, proposing the use of automotive sales business with about 100 parking spots on the site in the commercial district, also formerly in auto sales location.
Hi, my name is Calvin Paulino, I'm originally from Worcester.
All right, Calvin, good evening.
My name is Michael Marino, I'm with Cabco Consult, the land surveyor for this project for the parking plan.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's have Paul bring up.
Yep, just bear with me for one second, I'm just doing something quickly.
Nope, all right.
All right. Let's see, what we have here. All right, Michael, I have, let's see, project information, site plan, site plan, let's go with site plan with seal. Okay, let's share screen. All right, I'm trying to get as much on here as I can so that people can see it. There you go.
Okay, just like to highlight some features of this parking plan currently on the property. There's a two-story building, that's there. It's almost entirely asphalt surface in the front of the property, and in the back, where there is a retention pond, that is where it becomes wooded. So because of that, we'd like to request a waiver for any landscaping that has to be done, just because it is all asphalt in the front of the property. Currently, right now, there is a stormwater management system in the back, there's a drain catch basin that goes into a retention pond, and I did verify that all of the pavement is sloping toward that drain catch basin, and we'd also like to put the snow storage area right next to that drain catch basin as well. Currently, right now, there are 16 existing parking spaces, including two handicap spaces. What we're proposing is to have 63 additional parking spaces, which would make a total of 79 parking spaces. And keep in mind, this is a car dealership, there's not going to be 79 people in that building. Most of them will be occupied by cars for sale. Just a little bit of history of this property, which may be important. In the year 2000, there was a site plan that was approved for the use of this site to be an auto sale dealership, which it was a Ron Bouchard auto dealership. In 2005, they seeked an approval through the Conservation Commission for grading improvements in the back of the property, which I believe had to do with building the retention pond and also modifying the retaining wall in the back as well. The auto sales continued until about 2010, and maybe a year or two after that, I'm not sure, I think Ron Bouchard moved across the street, and it's pretty much, in 2017, it was bought by a company called Chev, I'm sorry, Chevahn Fleet Solutions, which is a software company, so they used that building until 2023. And there was a year where there was another owner, I'm not sure what she did in that building, and then...
It was the same owner, they just transferred, it was the same people.
Okay, I'm sorry, it was the same people. And then now, we come to my client, who is the owner, who now has possession of the building, and he would like to make this into an auto dealership.
Is the first, to the south, the parking, like on the adjoining lot, is that like an easement you have on that side of the building with those spaces, so you can drive around the building?
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't mention that. In 2016, there's an A and R plan approved between our site and the abutte, in which they created a right-of-way access easement, and it seems, I don't know why it was created per se, but because of that, we can't, obviously, we can't block the right-of-way.
But we do want to change.
But I think your question is, they use those spaces on the upper lot?
Yes.
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 You are not using the one against the building, because there's a doorway and everything to the top half of your structure from that side, to the south. Like, there's a hole.
I'll pull up the street view.
Yeah, you bring up the street view.
Well, yes, there's existing parking spaces on the east and the west side of the building.
Right.
Right, but to the south of the building.
Hold on, hold on, make it easier when I pull it up. So this is, so this is what she's talking, this entrance here.
So are those your spaces there along the building, so you can access the building from that level?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Trying to say is that you have an access, you have an easement to use this driveway here to go around your building, but you can park there in front of your building, so it's not just the spaces down below, you have parking spaces availability on that level.
Correct.
But we own also part of that property as well.
Yeah, right, it shows on the site plan here.
Oh, right there, he said there was an A and R.
Here's the property line right here.
Okay.
And that retaining wall that you see, that's about, I don't have an exact measurement, but maybe 12 to 15 high-foot retaining wall, it's pretty high.
Yeah.
So in the back, there is a ramp that goes up to the other side of the building.
Right, yeah, right there.
And up at the top, I don't know what you want to call it, there's a little rectangular section that that retaining wall encompasses, that's where we wanted to put the...
Yeah, Kia there for a second.
The dumpster as well.
Just, just for the timeline, the Kia dealership, they didn't move across the street, they've always been across the street. They opened the Kia dealership, they built these, Ron Bouchard built these buildings.
For used car, I think it was used car and Kia.
Yeah, and then they abandoned the idea when they, when they sold the Kia portion, or they moved, or they condensed everything.
They moved to Lancaster.
Yeah, right, right.
Oh, I did not know that.
Yeah, so they always started across the street, this was kind of, they, at one point, they had both across the street and here going at the same time. So the question I had was, so he, so you're, it's confusing. So your site plan here, which I don't, I don't necessarily have a problem with, has all these parking spaces, right? If you look at the site plan that was approved, I shouldn't even say approved, because I don't know if it was approved, that was in front of the planning board, which is right here.
Oh, I found it.
What?
I found the minutes.
Yeah, I didn't even go back and look, but this is the detention basin you're talking about back here, shows on this site plan that we did in 2005, and then it has the parking spaces, the ones in front of the building here, and the ones along that retaining wall here, so all on the lower portion. If you look at the aerial, which I'm going to pull up now, I took a picture of it, if you look at the aerial, wait, one second, I got to go through all my different, whoops. Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a copy of that plan.
Yeah, no, that's fine, that's fine. I actually, the prior engineer, I had to call him because I couldn't find it either, and they sent it to me, so.
I think it was Whitman Amigan, right?
It was, yeah, it was Anthony, actually, the one that was here earlier, sent it to me. All right, hold on one second, I got to find the aerial that I sent myself.
And so he's looking for that. What type of automotive sales, any particular dealership or just used?
It's going to be used. Hopefully, one day, you know, I do have a new car dealership, actually Jeep Chrysler Bus Ram, just like Bouchard, but hopefully, I can talk to any brand that's available in this area, so we can put a new car dealership there. But first, let me start with the used car.
Well, it's an appropriate site for it, it's designed for it.
It's a beautiful site, I love it.
Oh, here it is, I found it.
There was a different site plan, per se, of, I think there was some park, yeah, see, there was parking more along the...
So if you look at the way, and this was when Ron was, this is 2010, so it was used as Kia dealership then, they had, the spaces in front of the building are more visible when you look at this aerial. Let me go 2D. So, so these spaces are easily defined, so when we did a site plan in 2005, it was these spaces and these spaces which aren't actually on this plan. These spaces were never striped, but you can even see the outline here of where they parked all the cars forever, like, so, so what it looks like was, Ron came to the planning board and said, "These are the spaces we're going to use for employees and customers, these ones that they actually still currently have," and they parked cars all over the site in... all over the site in a very, you know, deliberate pattern, but it was, it doesn't look like it was ever striped. Even when you go back to when they were using it, here, it, yeah, I mean, maybe, maybe it's striped. I don't know. It's, it's hard to tell.
It looks like they were.
I prefer it like that, but because of that slope, that's the slope that we have for the right-of-way, it kind of makes it.
So there is a little bit of evidence of striping out there.
Okay.
It's very, very faded. But the way I view this is the, the spaces that were clearly striped, I called existing. And that's kind of what I defined as the existing spaces and.
I mean, the.
Are you going to lay down the striping as the, as your proposed plan?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the, yeah, I, I, that's fine. I mean, I, it, it looks, and maybe it's just because this right-of-way is, is, you know, it, it's easy to envision when you look at the aerial, but the, these spaces, it looks a little haphazard how these spaces kind of are all, especially you have these spaces along the street and then you switch 90-degree to those. When you look at the aerial, I mean, I suppose it's going to come in spaces here, and then you have all the spaces around. I assume the existing pylons, you're keeping all that stuff. I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I was, I found it interesting that there were, there were multiple site plans going back to a council. The city council actually approved the special permit when it was a special permit back in 2000. And there was a mention of this plan, but in the plan, the only spaces that were ever striped were in front of the building. So.
So my only concern was in whether or not there was any feedback from DPW was does the main driveway entrance?
I got, I got some comments here if you wait one second.
Because it was just that it's, well, the curb's been run over so many, it's like flattened there. It's not really defined about that. And you've got some display cars like right to the edge too. So it was just kind of like, where's that more a little bit of definition of your driveway? Because it seems to be kind of run over on the sidewalk bit, like where the driveway is.
Um.
I'm going to bring that up.
This might be a general comment that might not specifically apply to this plan, but it says, please provide a utility site plan showing existing and proposed utilities as well as stormwater management controls and stormwater calculations.
Yeah, so we're not proposing any construction other than striping the parking lot, and my client is putting a sign on the building. We're not digging. We're not doing anything.
Okay. I, I mean, that's something, that's something I think you have to, you have to deal with engineering about, DPW engineering about. I, I mean, we can't, I mean, aside from doing an approval, we can't, we can't say, yeah, disregard their comment. So if they tell you you have to do stormwater calcs and you have to do stormwater management, then you have to do stormwater management and stormwater calcs. So I, I, I don't know. The problem might be.
Could be a change in use.
I was going to say.
For the length of time that it was used and now it's being reused is that. So now whatever our new stormwater requirements are, just making sure it complies with that.
And, and I'm not even saying there's anything. I'm just reading you the comment. I don't know. I don't want to, I don't want to read into what they're asking because it might be because obviously, as you know, stormwater management has changed dramatically over the last couple of years. It might trigger a requirement of you to do that. I don't know. I don't know. So you'll have to, if and when we get to the point to, to discussing a decision today, the permit condition would be to satisfy their requirements. So however that ends up getting satisfied, it gets satisfied. The other comment from a different engineer was applicant to notify Conservation Commission if not already done so, since they're proposing work within 200 linear feet buffer zone of Baker Brook. So, and I know what you're going to say. You're not proposing any work because I know you just said that. So I'm just reading you the comment. And obviously, this will be, you know, you'll, you'll have to just explain to them and satisfy it however that ends up happening.
File an NOI and see if it.
Yeah, we can.
Anything.
Or, you know, you can just go to the Conservation Commission, just let them know, hey, I'm going to start work. Is this okay? Rather than.
I would, I would say it's probably easier just taking one at a time. Like, you'll, you'll see our permit conditions if and when we get to that point. Go to DPW Engineering, say, how do we resolve the, you know, the, the comments and just answer questions. And that's probably the, the, the easy way to do it. There's no comments from Board of Health. That's it.
We can forward you these comments.
Yep.
I'll take care of it.
You can follow, follow.
Yeah, if you want to just touch base with Chantel, she could probably just email you the two department comments she got so that you can see specifically, or you can watch the media again. And I just read them verbatim. So either way. But, but, I mean, the gist of it is, I have obviously, obviously no problem with the use. It's what it was. It's just a question of just going through the legal channels to get everything up and running.
And you're not proposing any parking on the street side, so to speak. So that's.
Unfortunately, there's not enough room.
The one thing I want to say is what they did here, you should not be able to do. That sidewalk, that's super wide. It's like 12, 14 feet wide. You could see from the aerial, they used to park cars there. And I remember when they did it, and it was a pet peeve of mine because it's just, like, I get why they did it. It's easily visible. But, but it's, it's, it's such an eyesore, especially when they sit there for so long and, you know, it's, it, cars shouldn't be on the other side of that retaining wall. And to make your site look good, if someday you can do nice planter boxes or, you know, some sort of landscaping in that giant area you have in the front, it would not only make your business look better, but, you know, it would be, it would be a good addition to the, to the area. So.
Okay. We can work on that.
Yeah, because it's just a swamped pavement.
That was going to be one of my questions. In the beginning of your presentation, you asked for a landscaping waiver on, on.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
And what were the grounds that you were using to ask for a landscaping waiver?
Um, I just assumed that was part of the site plan requirements.
Landscaping?
Yes.
So you don't, you're proposing that you don't want to do any landscaping?
Well, it's all asphalt. The whole site is basically asphalt.
How about the area that the vice chair was talking about?
I can pull up the.
It's still asphalt.
That's in the street. That's like, people walk through there.
Is that land that you own up there or is it?
Well, we own about halfway between the retaining wall and the granite cobbing, which is not enough to even park a car legally.
So it looks like, like if you look, Peter, if you look at this, this line right here is the right-of-way. And where it says between a sidewalk, this big area here is, is where most of that pavement is. They do have an area that, I, I don't have a scale, so I can't do a scale on it, but it looks like it's probably about 10 feet on their property, give or take. I, I mean, Mike, you probably can know better, but.
I mean, if, if you want to get technical, there is a controlled line out there. I'm sorry. A controlled line out there that you can measure about six feet, which is a standard sidewalk width.
I mean, quite honestly, the, the real eyesore is the Mastat eyesore. If you look right there where all the weeds are and stuff, that's all the state right-of-way. That's Mass Department of Transit. So the problems, the major issues are, are within the state right-of-way. The, I mean, I think quite honestly, I don't know why.
You can scrape that up, you know, just let, you know, you can pull weeds from the sidewalk. It's okay.
I, I don't know why it was set back so far. I'm sure it had something to do with how high this retaining wall was. They had to get it back so far. But they, the closer you get to the street with that retaining wall, the more of an issue I'm sure it is. So I, I mean, I can only guess. But I, I agree, Peter. I mean, it's, it doesn't look great.
Parking lot lights are. I would say, we talked about planter boxes. Even if you did like some giant urn like you see outside here, pot, a couple of, a few of those and the couple of spots would probably go a long way to help dressing up the frontage a bit. Your spot right there.
It would be, it would be nice for everyone's benefit, your business and the city if you could do something.
So right there, as I was just talking about the entrance, see the depressed spot right there? Where it's like, you, the granite curbing like went down. So it was kind of like, where does your driveway, where is the driveway open to make sure?
Not even granite on the other side till you get all the way over there?
I just assumed the end of the granite was supposed to be the openings.
Well, yeah, you're not supposed to drive really over the granite. Unless you're asking for opening up the curb cut some more scenario. So, but it's not, I'll just say it's not defined. Everybody's going to keep driving, driving, driving over the granite. So it's like, is there anything you could do on the, just to define it a little bit?
I see how they had a mark, like a little arrow.
Yeah, right here.
We could do that when they do the.
I mean, you do an in, you do an in and an out, arrows there, kind of dead, you know, delineating, just come in on the right.
How about you even do a painted, painted line from where the edge of the curb is over to where, because you're going to be parking a couple of cars there.
You're talking about like this, Paul?
Exactly. Just draw like a line over so that people, you know, it's like, you know, you're defining a little bit of an alleyway.
Yeah, I see.
So you go like that so that, you know, because you're going to have a car parked there. So you're going to draw the line, the car will be on the other side of the line. And you have like more of the fine, just the driveway area, at least when it's not, when you can see the pavement conditions that might be help, just a bit helpful there so that people won't be taking too sharp of a corner and stuff like that over the, still with the curbing. Yeah, a little bit more visible.
So delineate entrance with striping?
Yeah.
And arrows. Delineate entrance with striping and arrows.
We understand that's a state road, so any work in the state road is, takes a lot of doing, even to like raise the curb.
I, I think, I think you can.
But at least in the mitigated.
Yeah, you can, you can, you can make the problem not an issue just by adding striping. And that's no, you're going to be striping the lot anyway, so that's kind of a no cost thing.
That's what I'm saying. Since I'm striping the lot, let me just ruin the same time.
Yeah. Yeah. Just make sure it looks nice. Straight lines, straight lines.
Yeah. And if you could add some type, like you mentioned, some kind of pot or something or, or just something in the front would be helpful because it's just nothing but some weeds and.
Okay.
Yeah, you probably have to. So here's the site plan. You probably just have to take it from edge of that curb just to that first parking space.
Yeah.
Because, because obviously, you're not going to go down, you're not going to draw a line in front of your parking spaces. So draw it down to that first parking space and that kind of, that'll delineate that. And, you know, one might be nice if you cross hatchet here. So you have a, you have a, kind of this triangle is, you know, do not cross over. It'll protect, might even protect one of your cars there if you ever have one there. Presumably, you have to go, did you already go in front of the license commission or do you have to for?
No, I had to, I have to do this.
You have to?
Yeah.
Okay. I was just curious because I, I don't know how it works now, but they used to set number of cars. Do they still do that? Do they still do that?
I don't know. And it's different, different cities.
Okay.
So you said the 79 spaces, so that's total, like around the whole building too on the other side?
Correct, including the.
And how many, I guess, how many would be display spaces and how many would be for like employees or visitor space?
Employees is probably going to be the one on the top of the hill.
So in the back?
In the back. And then in the front, it's going to be customers coming in.
Is there an elevator in that building?
No, there is no elevator.
So I wanted to just, because it's like, say in front of the license commission, they're going to say, well, how many vehicle spaces are going to be for sale? How many display spaces out of the spaces?
So it's about 70, 70 parking spaces is going to be shown. And then the rest are just, right?
So like nine spaces for?
Yeah, so it's going to be about nine.
Visitors?
79 total. I don't know how many employees.
Well, but there's like 10 across the bottom already. So you've got more than.
I mean, there's plenty of spaces on the site.
Oh, yeah.
That's not a, that's not a problem. Quite honestly, I wish, I wish some of the spaces would go away, but I don't care enough. I don't think it matters enough to waste their time to take them out. It's just, it's kind of overdoing it with all these spaces. But at the same time, I don't think it matters. So.
I mean, you've got, and you've got your, the dumpster in the area is already to the back.
Yep.
So that's not an issue. It's out of, not visible.
Yeah, keep it behind that retaining wall, which is where you have it now, I think, right?
Yep.
So that it's not, you know, not an eyesore from the street, but aside from that.
The signage is just the existing, there's no sign existing.
It's going to be on, on top of the building. It's, you'll, if you zoom into the building, you'll see the.
Right. Are you talking about here?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's, what's the name of, going to be on the building?
Uh, Paulino Auto Group.
Okay.
You know, the, the, the site itself looks very nice. And the, the building looks great.
Yep.
And I think you have a, a great spot there to sell cars. You're going to do very well there with all the traffic.
Thank you.
The only thing that bothers me a little bit is when the site was planned, whenever that was years ago, they certainly didn't consider curb appeal. They didn't consider working into that site. Let's make it really look good too. So it, it's a little, the site itself is a little, it's a little barren. It, it needs some, some, something there to make it a little more attractive. And I do agree, there's not much you can do. But I, but I do agree with, with the chair and the vice chair that at a bare minimum, you can make the entrance look really good. And by doing that, I think people will want to come there.
Okay.
Just make the entrance look a little more attractive.
All right.
Yeah, I think if we had a do-over with this, you have the building straight in the back facing the front, and you have landscaping along the front of the street there. I think, I think a do-over would have been nice, but this predates all of us. So, and the building was built probably in 2000-ish?
2001.
Yeah, so because the special permit was 2000.
I worked for George Watts.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
This whole site, the two buildings.
No kidding.
Yeah. Well, they made the landscaping work, I mean, the, the contour work. That's why you got the building, one story on one side and two story on the others.
Yeah, because I remember finance was on the top floor. And then the sales was on the first floor.
No kidding.
Any automotive, probably automotive repair there?
No.
There's no?
No.
That's just, okay. All righty.
Just so you know, we have no attendees virtual.
Okay. Any questions from board members further? Anybody online? Allyn and Alex?
No questions from me.
Okay.
No question to me either.
Is there anybody present in the room that has any comments or questions? No? Okay.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion's been made with the second to close the hearing. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say opposed. Roll call vote. Amanda?
Aye.
Allyn?
Ayes.
Peter?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye. Discussion.
Make a motion to approve the site plan for Paulino Auto Group, 347 Lunenburg Street, subject to the plan provided as well as redelineating the entrance with striping and arrows as discussed.
Second. In addition of any, what do you want to call it, container landscaping towards the front?
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I think it's, yeah. Certainly reasonable to put that in there. I don't think that's asking a lot.
It's a big thing.
You're okay if we make that a permit condition that you do some plantings, you do some, you know, raised bed plantings or maybe around those lights going up this, going up the?
Around the lights will be.
What's that?
Around the lights.
Yeah, like you built, like you build a rock, you build a decorative wall around them and you fill it with, you know, dirt and mulch and nice plantings and.
And the light poles?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Three light poles going up there?
I could do that.
I mean, something to make it look nice. I, I, I think you could take some creative license if you want to get really nice.
What's that? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you could do that. I mean.
Like I even said, like, say it's out front, how large the pot, like some large pots, I think, that around.
If you did that, you wouldn't be able to do it around the lights.
No, exactly. That would be in front of, that would be like in front or approximate to them or something like that. Or you could do more permanent, like around it, but something.
Okay. I could do, I could do on the lights.
Great. That'd be awesome.
Landscaping around the lights. That'd make it look nice.
Because it was floated at one point, at least between Paul and I, about having you tear up that pavement and doing a landscaping script. So we didn't, we did not go there. So make it look really good.
Make it look good. Just at least do around that and, you know, something flowy or whatever, you know?
Okay.
Yep. Not just, you know, dirt.
Do you already own the site? You own the property?
Yes.
Okay.
Awesome. Like that.
That's a motion.
All right. In form of, anything else, anybody? Nope. Keep the trash hidden. All good. And then, and then also subject to, you resolving any DPW or.
Yeah, right.
Stormwater and.
Subject to replying to DPW comments.
And concrete. Right. Just addressing any stormwater issues.
Okay.
And, and they do want to see, even if you're not tying into new utilities, they want to see utility plan showing existing utilities. Don't say, I didn't say that. Don't say that, cause that's a big thing lately, cause they wanna know now where things are going into properties if there's ever problems.
Cause they're looking at all the stormwater-
Mm-hmm.
And sewer separation work as well going on, make sure there's that, and then whether or not, how old it is and whether or not it needs to be cambered or anything along those lines, to make sure the integrity of the line's good.
Okay.
That being in form of a motion, right?
Yes.
Second.
Was there a second?
Amanda?
No, Amanda, just a second. So all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed, roll call vote. I'll start with Amanda again.
Aye.
Allyn?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good luck, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Good luck to you.
Could I ask a hypothetical question?
Sure.
I know it's close and everything, but if he were to eliminate that right of way and talk to the, about it, get an attorney and just eliminate it, could he put in more spaces without, or, or is that gonna trigger a whole site plan again and?
Any change to the site in adding, adding a x amount, ten thousand square feet of impervious area, or adding x amount of parking spaces triggers site plan review? I don't know what the numbers are.
Five parking spaces?
I guess ten parking spaces.
Ten parking spaces.
That's major, but fi, minor?
Minor, but this is a major anyways, it still would be a modification.
Yeah, be modifica, could be modification.
I mean, how could you need more parking spaces than what we just approved?
I'm, I'm just-
Couldn't even imagine a scenario where-
The thing is, the right of way, they have no use.
Yeah.
Oh, you're talking about the right of way on the entrance?
On the top of the screen, right there, Paula.
They, they have no use for the right of way in my parking lot.
Right, so you saw, like, when you saw the other overlay from what they used-
Right, but the right of way's your entrance, so I can't, I, I don't know how you would create appropriate flow of travel through the site without, if you got rid of that right of way and you made parking there, then you don't have dedicated tra, I mean, these travel lanes are not ideal as if this were the, you know, the, the, the way you wanna funnel people. You wanna, you want people to come in this way, park here, or come down here, or come all the way around and park here. You want them to use that, that, that upper access. Now, whether the neighbors use it or not is-
That's what I'm saying.
I don't care, you know, if they use it.
It's about, there's no need for the neighbor to use it.
And I don't disagree with that, but I also don't think, I think even if they didn't use it, it still is the travel lane to get through your site, to get to all your parking on your property.
That was because of the-
No, no, I, I understand that point.
If you move that right of way-
It's not about parking the spot, it's just, there's no reason.
If you remove the right of way and you wanted parking, like you wanted to shift everything up north, I would agree with that. Like, if we could make a travel lane come through the middle of the site, I think that'd be awesome, but you would need to shift everything because you couldn't have the parking here and have parking above it. It wouldn't be, people would be backing into each other and it just wouldn't, wouldn't make sense, I don't think.
Is that, who do you share the right of way with for that? Is this not, is not a utility easement or just a-
The cleaning company.
It's because, yeah, cause that was the, that's where the service was.
Yeah, there used to be a service with, um-
A busheds.
The busheds there, so I'm assuming that's why they had-
The upper lot, the one up on top.
Yeah, so they could, they didn't have to go onto Lunenburg Street, they could just go onto the-
This one right, this one right here.
Oh, they used to go all the way-
This one right here.
That's where service, Kia Service was up there.
So, so it runs, if you go up there, Paula, it runs back here between the two buildings, and then if you go down here, there's this ramp that comes down here.
But you're sharing access easement on the left-hand side, where the-
It goes all the way around, it's a big loop.
Right.
I don't think I'm, I wish, I don't think, there's enough space to, for my land there, I don't have to share his land, actually.
Oh, no, no.
Well, the people on the left, I don't see the need for them to come all the way down, cause they have an entrance, but-
So, Paul, go up towards their entrance? It's one, so that, so you're both using that to get in and out now? They don't need to go on the other part of your site to do that, so, but, but you're sharing an easement there?
I mean, if you wanted just extinguish the easement, I don't think, you don't need permission from us for that, that has nothing to do with it. If you wanted to change the way the parking is on the site, I think, I mean, at the very least, you should come back and just show us what you're planning on doing because we just approved the site plan, like-
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
Yeah, come back for a modification or another-
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I don't think it's a problem, to be honest with you, if you wanna do it, but I think at the same time, kinda works as that main axis anyway. I know when, when we used to, you know, when anyone went to busheds, that you go there and drive around all the, either through, cause he had cars on both sides, he actually had cars on the other side of that access easement.
But, but can you see the cars from that side? Like, if you're driving up Lunenburg Street, can you see the front of the cars? That's kinda one of the thing, right? Is it, no, everything?
Yeah, see how?
See how you had cars parked on this side too?
That way versus the other.
So then you'd hook, and you'd park in front.
Right.
I mean, is that what you're talking about, Mike?
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, as, as long as you, the only problem you run into here is, I don't know if you have enough for a travel aisle there.
Yeah, we might need to delete a couple spaces in that area or something.
Right, you just, you just make this cut through here and then you get rid of like five spaces there if you decide to do that, but, I mean, if you, if you wanna do that, let's talk about it when you, when you settle that with the neighbor and you decide you wanna do it. At least this'll get you, get you moving.
It's an option for you.
Yeah, right.
Okay, just wanna go through the right deployments, that's-
Yeah, no, no, it's, I mean, quite honestly, I, I, once, once you get through the headaches that are involved in this, a change like that, I can't imagine it causes anything different cause you're, you'll already go through whatever you need to license commission and if there's anything with Concom, which I don't know, or whatever, you're gonna go through that now, you won't have to go through it again, I wouldn't think afterwards, so. Yep, well, good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Well, good night, good luck to you.
All right, let me stop sharing my screen.
All right, we have some other business this evening.
I can do that, thank you.
Yes.
We have Mr. Gandor from Speedy Cannabis.
How's it going?
Did you guys get any email from Chantel on, like, cause I clearly had time to send them in, but I made copies of what I'm here to update you on.
Okay, sure, we can hand them off.
Let me see here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
These are just a couple of articles that I printed out from nowhere today.
Okay, if you bear with me one second, I'm gonna pull up what I have.
Sure.
I, I did, I, I sent what you emailed me.
Yes, that's the right, okay. All right, so I don't have to give them hot?
It should be under other business.
Yeah, I got both of them, they're both up.
Okay.
So, so I got both plans, you tell me what you want, you tell me what you want up and-
So this is what it looks like now, this is the work that we've done from the last time we got the special permit. We basically did the electric, the plumbing, a bathroom, a vault. And then we were kinda in the process of, you know, originally we leased the whole place and we talked to the, you know, the trust that we're gonna close it all up. And then the, uh, the, the, the market changed, you know? The two-driver option, they, they, they removed the two-driver option. You can only, you can have one driver now. The Cannabis Control Commission changed the rules on that. And, um, a lot of the delivery companies were going out of business or not even opening up. Also dispensaries, what happened is, I don't know, I'm not a economist, but the price collapsed of cannabis, so the, the margins dropped and, there's changes, you know, in the industry, you know, that, that, generally what happened. So we decided to kind of propose or tell you that we would like to come before you again with a, another iteration proposal, modification on, on the site plan that was approved, meaning scale it down to one vehicle, um, and one driver, which is me and my wife, that's the only two people working, or not working, you know? And lease the back, cause we already built it out, the vault, the security system, everything is done internally. It's about, I think, five hundred, maybe four fifty, four hundred and fifty square feet that we're gonna be using from the building. And the second drawing would be, this is basically the, what we're gonna come in officially, you know, as a, as a sort of like a revised, uh, option. And I wanted, just to let you guys know upfront what we plan to do, scale it back and just use that back vault and have one car.
No autos, no auto repair?
We, we're only gonna be leasing that back room. We, we don't, we, we, Speedy, Speedy-
Yes, auto repair, that's what he's talking about.
We're, we're leasing that space to use it for cannabis. Initially, we're gonna take over the whole building, you know, but we can't afford to do that now, you know?
You say leasing, but you're running the cannabis business, right? And you own the building?
No, I don't own the building, no.
You don't own the building?
No, no, we leased it.
Oh, I thought you were the property owner, who owns the building?
It's a trust, it's a family trust.
Who's the owner? Who's the name of the trustees?
Uh, Johnny's Service Trust of Fitchburg.
Right, who's the names involved in the trustees?
Um, it's, uh, Almusa-
Are they related to you?
Almusa, the family of my wife.
Okay, cause I was gonna say, I was, under the impression someone told me you own the property.
No, I don't own it, no.
Okay, all right.
I think that was one of the issue, there was a very big main issue of the police department focus is, is not having a multiple use there. Particularly no auto, no auto repair.
Correct, that was an issue, and we plan to talk to the police department once we come back with our proposal and see what they say. We, we don't have any other options, we can't.
Yeah, but you're proposing-
How about a different location then? If you don't own the building, go somewhere else.
All you need is a small spot somewhere else with a parking space, and so you're proposing gasoline sales, auto repair, and the cannabis stuff.
We, we did look, I did look, and they're all the same. We looked at, I don't know, I'm not gonna start naming places, but the laundromat place that closed next-
Independent, yeah.
Right, they willing to lease the back, but again, it's gonna be another business in the front. We talked to the muffler shop across from the laundromat, they also have muffler and auto sales, they have space in the back. We looked at the upholstery shop up the street. They also have two different businesses, water, uh, storage for a business, another business, a third business.
So it's not just, just so you know, it's not just two businesses, it's, it's the, it's the non-complimentary businesses of auto repair, gas station, and marijuana delivery. If you had marijuana delivery, which we approved, um, well, outside a dispensary, obviously, we approved one on River Street, but if, if-
Like in a plaza or-
Westminster Street, I meant, but yes, if you were in a professional office building with similar types of uses or places with adequate security and, you know, I, I think that the problem is these uses are not compatible. And, and I think unless you can convince the chief otherwise, unless the chief tells me it's okay, it's not okay. And I know he felt strongly that, you know, cause we talked at length about this, that these uses are not compatible uses. So it's not, like, you could find another building that has a different use that might be compatible with, you know, uh, uh, in, in and out delivery where you're just doing bookkeeping and, and storage, again, that's a security issue, you can find places that are secure, but this use itself is problematic with that type of property.
For the last six months, I've been looking at places and talking to owners. Uh, for John Fitch, I met with Chantel and Economic Development. The, the, the challenge is finding a small enough space. There are spaces, but they're huge. Yeah, warehouses, industrial warehouses are similar to that use.
Did you try and approach any of the, um, this, any of the cultivation facilities to see if you could sublet space in their buildings? Cause they have security.
We looked at that and the way, when we applied initially for, to change the zoning, to add delivery, and we spoke to, um, at length with that, I had several meetings with the economic board, they designated, uh, industrial, uh, delivery operator as in commercial auto zone, not in industrial. So, for instance, if you know Ethos and AMP and the cannabis cultivation, they're allowed in industrial, but delivery is not. This would have been perfect, cause I did speak to AMP, by the way, and I did apply for, uh, determination, and they said, no, you can't do it there. They, and we're the ones that applied for the zoning change.
Right, right. I know, I, I, I understand, I mean, I-
I don't know why-
I think it was you guys that suggested it be there just so that we wouldn't have to deal with all the other issues.
Right, but I didn't ask for them to exclude industrial.
Yeah.
That would have been perfect.
Yeah.
So all we're left with are these multiple use places. The commercial auto is commercial auto. I went to spoke to, uh, uh, the Subaru dealer off, on Lunenburg Street of John Fitch Image, he has some garages back there. It's gonna be the same thing, there's garage on another business and a body shop. I spoke to, uh, the guy across the street who, who, who's next to the station, USA, he owns a couple of things, he has a showroom in the front, an inspection station, and space to lease in the back. I've been, done nothing but knock on doors for the last six months, really, I mean, there's, there's-
I applaud the homework that you did.
Industrial, Broad Street, Circle Street. I spoke to them many, I bothered her so many times, you know, I mean, really.
Yeah.
And, and if there was any other option, we wouldn't have, I wouldn't be here today.
So, okay, let me ask you theoretically, cause this is gonna come up in conversation, if, if you, if we can get some sort of agreement with department heads, the chief, and the planning board and everything else, can we narrow it down to two uses? Either gas station and-
I think the, use of the garage is gonna be a big problem.
Right, that's what I'm saying. You have three, you're talking about three uses, you're talking about garage, gas station, and delivery.
Well, look, the delivery, honestly, it's sort of like, um, I mean, more, I don't what to say, it's a, a risk or, we're trying to minimize the risk because we, as of now, it's non-feasible economically, as of now.
So, so the reason why, the reason why I bring that up is, you have to understand from the planning board's perspective is, I understand for you, like, it might be just you and your wife doing delivery, like you said, or whatever the case is, as soon as we approve this, you know, do, do you, do you create a situation where, you know, it, it becomes a much bigger, uh, operation than we anticipated and does that become problematic? It causes issues that we tried to mitigate by saying, yeah, you can definitely do it, but you just gotta choose what you want to do there.
Let's assume that it becomes successful. You're gonna need a bigger space. It's not enough space. A 400-square-foot room is not enough with one car. But it is a beginning for a social equity licensee. My wife has the license, Almusa Basima, as a minority. That's why they granted us the license to begin with.
The two-car space in the garage?
There's two car spaces in the garage, yeah. But that's, we don't plan to, like I said, one outside.
Can I ask you other hypothetical questions since we're on the topic? Let's, again, let's just assume that it's a possibility. Are you still gonna do all of the other exterior improvements, get rid of the overhead door? Are you still gonna beautify the outside of the building, do all the landscaping, redo the parking? Do the pump so it's only one thing? Or are you gonna leave, you want to leave all that the way it is?
We don't have, like I said, the, honestly, the money to do any of that. What we spent on zoning, and legal, and the license, and the construction, you know, if we had, if we were to go to another location, we're looking at money that we don't have.
What's inside right now? What construction? You built the vault?
Yeah.
You did? All the securities, like, did you?
Yeah, everything is done. What you see there is done. Plumbing, a bathroom, the vault, security system.
Now, was that, and this is just a, I understand, you don't no longer want to do it the way that was permitted, but was that the design that we permitted?
No.
Okay.
No, we said single use at the time. Single use, meaning the whole building is gonna be used for delivery. Right now, we're trying to get back to the multiple use, and I understand, we have to talk and get a lot of hurdles through. And I understand the uses, but the other uses we looked at were exactly the same or even more complicated. The other buildings that are zoned for this. Unless we change the zoning, and then we can go to industrial.
I'm a little concerned that you built it out to not what was approved.
Well, I'm just looking. Did you pull permits for all that?
Yeah.
Well, then, I don't understand how, pulling a permit for something that.
I mean, I suppose you could, it's not going against the building permit, building whatever you want to build.
Right, you're pulling a building permit.
Just because we have a site plan, doesn't, I mean, a special permit, doesn't mean you have to do it that way.
But, doesn't it though?
No, because you could choose not to, you could choose not to do what was approved in the site plan and use it the way it's used now. Just because he did this, as of right now, you can only use it for the gas station.
All that in with the garage is all one. You cannot have a separate and other use of that garage and have anybody else in there that is other than who's running the cannabis company.
Yeah, separate. They're separate.
Separate, you have two doors, you're still saying you're doing auto repair work there. You cannot do auto.
No, the space is separate. The vault, the vault and the space is separate. There's no.
It's only separated by a door.
A door. What do you mean?
There's literally a door right there that goes into the garage.
That's not separate.
Isn't the space back there that, that space?
It's part, you have to go through the garage to get there.
No, no, no. No, it's gonna be an outside entrance. No, no, I understand.
But you also have a door.
Yeah, 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 outside entrance, yeah.
Why is there a door, why is there a door?
Inside is because that's where the car was supposed to be parked for the cannabis.
Right.
But now they want to share it again.
No sharing, no, no sharing. The cannabis car will be outside, the entrance from outside.
Yeah, right here, secure cannabis.
There's no sharing.
How do you?
We said no to the outside gate, the walkable gate.
Right.
Supposed to be in the garage.
Correct. No, no, that I know, what we all kind of agreed on, but.
Okay, so this is what you're proposing. I'm just saying, very high bar. I don't like the idea myself because of the same use inside. It'd be one thing about you were using the building totally for the cannabis, and then maybe you're doing some gasoline sales, where they're completely separate. No one's going in and out of the building that's otherwise authorized, running the business. And I, it's like understandable. I think there's even like someone out that sits at the pumps to pump the gas. That is one of the major concerns the police brought up into our attention as well, so I agree with them on that aspect of it.
Well, I think, I think the first step is, you gotta find out if it's a nonstarter with the police. Because I guarantee you, if they say no, I'm saying no. I can't speak for the rest of the board, but we will, I won't override our police chief if he says he doesn't think it's a good idea.
Yes, of course.
I mean, I remember the conversation before. I thought he was pretty adamant that multiple uses aren't there. And I'm not even saying if he says yes, I'll say yes. I'm just saying, you gotta start there. It's not even worth us having this conversation until you get the okay from the police chief.
Of course, that's why I'm here. I want to hear what you have to say.
And then, and then obviously, you know, we gotta, we gotta go through, you know, see if, you know.
But that was a risk you took on building it out to not the approved plan, too. So, you know, you spent money in a certain direction that.
No, we were on our way to that, and then the market just collapsed.
Well, still, you didn't come to ask the questions before you did that, so you made an investment into something.
I think this was, I thought it was what we agreed, no?
I don't have the plan from before, so I don't know.
I thought that was, this was the.
It might be, if you're talking about one use and then you have the garage being where the car goes.
Right.
I don't have it in front of me. I don't have what we approved.
I'm pretty sure that we followed what originally.
Okay, well, we both were under the impression, because we thought you just said that you deliberately didn't do that. So I think it was just because we thought that's what you said, so.
How much was that? Because we might have it right there.
It is, oh, God.
I understand.
When, do you remember when you got the permit?
A year ago, I think, maybe September.
I feel like it was winter, like it was cold.
All the decisions are online as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I want to see the site plan.
Yeah.
Alright, let me, alright, let me pull it up.
I just gotta say, I drive by that gas station every day, and I've really been kind of looking forward to seeing what kind of improvements you were gonna make with this permit that we gave, and it, you know, I'm disappointed that we haven't been able to follow through with your original.
Believe me, after what we spent, guess where the disappointment is most? Five years.
So it's funny, I don't have it in.
We spent everything we have, every dime we had. We took loans. And.
I think we have to, it's also maybe requesting another zoning change.
I'm not Ron Bouchard. I'm not, I don't have that kind of money to do that again.
Can I ask you a question about the money you spent on that building?
It's not online, Chantel.
What Amanda is saying.
It's not in the decisions.
Very forward to seeing that building start to look good. And you spent a lot of, you may have spent a lot of money on that building.
The money we spent, new HVAC, all new electric, completely, from start to finish.
It was definitely.
All new plumbing, all new bathroom, all new walls inside and framing. So you didn't see the improvement outside.
I could just go to the next page.
Because you didn't go inside.
Well, this is, this is something you should have known upfront.
Yeah.
If you're gonna tackle a project and you're gonna be remodeling a building inside and out, you've gotta have some kind of an idea what it's gonna cost you.
It's still not on there.
Correct.
So, you know, right now, you've spent money inside. Now you want to change the use, yet the outside still looks terrible. And I agree with Amanda 100 percent. That building, I want to see looking really good.
If you guys like it, I'll, you know, we can, the police department is okay with multiple use, and I come back, I'll definitely. Because it's a lot cheaper for me to be in this building than to go find another building and start the process again. So I will do, make you proud and happy.
Well, that's what was.
And we will.
Originally planned.
We will. Either it's gonna not happen at this point. If we cannot do this, then the whole project is scrapped. And if we can do this, then we will do it to upgrade the facade, the landscaping, the parking lot, and so on.
Yeah.
We will. I'm not, I'm not running away, I'm not shying away from that. We want it, and we will.
It was in April 23.
Yeah, it's not, I looked through all the decisions online. It's not in there.
Yeah. There are, there are, is a door from the office and from the other.
Oh, you found it?
Yeah, I did. But the other room is, I'll show you. It's in April 23.
Oh, I could have just gone back to the month. I didn't, okay.
I just went to the documents.
I didn't go back each month. I see what you're saying. Alright, so I can pull April 23 hearings. I was looking for, just through the decisions, 339 River, okay.
It's still a bit different.
A bit. But for single use, it wouldn't have mattered where you put the bathroom. I mean.
I don't know if you can understand, I agree with Peter wholeheartedly, that at the very least, we would have expected, like, some progress outside. Regardless of what you chose to do, you'd think just the general landscaping would be, you're a business owner, you want your business to look good. Your businesses look terrible for 10 years, 15 years, since Johnny, you know, since Johnny Sanoco was out of the picture. How long has that been? 20 years? I mean, it's, it's, it's just, the outside is, it's rough.
Needs some investment.
Yes, yes, I agree.
So, this was, so, I believe, and you checked, Paul, there was no other month after this? This was the month we approved?
Uh, no.
I just asked because this.
My notes say April. I just found.
Alright, so what you built wasn't what we approved. You have the.
This was, I think, one of the iterations. Was this the approval? I don't think so.
Yeah, not the one with the outside.
No, no.
Oh, not with the outside bathroom.
Yeah, there's.
I mean, if we approved it this month, then this was, this was what we approved.
This is, this is what you approved.
That's the one with the employee toilet room is inside.
It's still inside.
No, there was a door to the outside last.
Where?
At one point.
Yeah, right, he's putting wind glass.
I think that was the proposal.
Well, we can go back and forth all day. That's neither here nor there. Either way, if you didn't do it according to the plan, and you should be the one to verify that, you couldn't open today as a cultivation facility if you didn't build it according to the plan we approved.
Correct.
So, so either way, you're gonna need either a modification of your permit to open as just a delivery company, or you start the process to try and figure out if, you know, if you can do it with multiple uses. I'm gonna be perfectly honest with you, I don't see it happening, but that's just me. You know, if the chief comes and says, I have no more concerns, no problem at all, looks great, then, okay, we'll talk. But you gotta, you gotta talk to him first.
Yes.
So police and fire, I would talk to the chiefs of police and fire, make sure everything's good, and then.
No, agreed, and I thank you, really, I do. I mean, that's exactly what I'm here for. That's why, I wanted to hear what everybody thinks, and I'm glad. But, but the other places are almost just the same as this one. I understand where you guys are coming from, and I know what you're seeing, but I've tried my darnedest to find a place that would fit the criteria of what we all imagine. I would like a place. Across from Market Basket, the old, not the old, that new strip mall where Santander Bank was, they closed down. Their zone, commercial auto.
Are you talking about the cultivation facility that just opened there?
No, no. No, there's a cannabis place, there's a closed bank.
I didn't mean cultivation, I meant retail. The retail facility closed? I didn't even.
No, 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 the bank closed.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Okay, I'm sorry, yes.
Right. And I also spoke to them to take over, but again, it's multiple use.
That would be, if you took, yeah, if you, that would be, that could be a more compatible use, given that, you know, again, you'd have to do security, you'd have to do, you'd have to meet the site plan regulations, or special part regulations for that particular property, but that, I would see that as being more viable property than this.
Yes.
That's like a little strip mall. You're talking about.
Next to a, next to a retail facility.
Yeah, but you're talking about your gas, like, your gas station isn't a mini strip mall, like.
Correct. Right.
A gas station.
Right. I approached them, but the bank isn't, isn't willing to sublease. Every, I took the map and I went on every person's door and I knocked. I even went to people's homes. I looked up from the public records where they live, and I went and knocked on their homes in Halifax and Springfield.
Would it make a difference? Well, would it, I think it probably would, if it was re-zoned so that it would also could be an industrial, not just commercial. I think that was also.
Miss another $100,000 worth of legal fees.
No, well, I'm just, you know, no, this is a petition whether or not, you know, the board would.
No, because you wouldn't necessarily have to do it.
You wouldn't have to do it to do that. Just saying that that's something the city can.
That would be perfect, because I found a space on Broad Street where the business parks are. The Broad Street, off Circle Street.
301 Broad Street, probably?
Yes. Yes, 310, 315, 350, 340. That would be perfect. That would be perfect. And they're separate and nice, and, but industrial is not zoned for delivery. It's in zoned for cultivation, but not for delivery, which I just don't understand why they exceptionalized the delivery from the industrial.
Well, it's because that's what was asked for, that's why. Because if you would have asked for those two zones, it probably would have gone for those two zones. But the petition only asked for the one, because it was only concentrated on the one. So it was very specific. That's why. It wasn't because nobody didn't want it.
I didn't know the difference, honestly. It was the lawyer that handled it, and if I knew, I would have. So you think that's a possibility? We can allow that in industrial?
I mean, we could have the conversation. I would have to do more thinking about it, but we could have the conversation, I suppose.
Who would, who would?
So, so, there's different, there's, there's, there's a few different people that can petition the city council for a zoning change. It's five registered voters, I believe. There's a petitioning board, which is the planning board, and another board may be zoning.
Council member themselves.
Councilors can petition, the mayor, I think can petition. So there's people that can do it, and that includes registered voters in the city of Pittsburgh, I don't think.
Would it be the same process we went through the first time, about a year worth of wait, or is it?
It requires public hearings, yes, and it requires a public hearing in front of us, a public hearing in front of the council, then the council deliberating. The council is the one that makes the determination. If you remember, we didn't before. We just heard all the conversation and gave a recommendation. So yes, it's the same process. I don't know how long it takes. I mean, easily months, but I have no idea how many months.
It took about eight, eight to 10 months last time.
I mean, I don't want to quote you on anything, but that doesn't sound unusual.
Right.
We're in the middle of a zoning change right now for solar, and I don't see an end in that in sight, and that's been about five months now, so.
Well, I was hoping for some legal interpretation on what delivery council.
Again, start with police and fire. Did you talk to them yet?
No.
Chief Marneau is the perfect person to talk to. Talk to him, see where he's at. If he says he still has the same belief as before, then you gotta figure out an alternative plan.
The petition?
Or some other alternative plan. A different location, I don't know.
Or a different location. But industrial is perfect. Commercial autos are difficult. I already tried. Industrial is perfect, and I already found the space and a willing lessor.
Yeah, so why don't you start with this site first? Talk to the chief, and then.
I appreciate, yes, yes. We're gonna do all three.
Talk about something.
Thank you, guys.
Then we'll have to decide if we want to do that petition.
Just a scenario that just came to my mind. Let's say that you did find a decent industrial site, and you decided you were gonna relocate there.
Yes.
What would happen to the gas station?
Nothing. We don't control it. We don't own it.
It would go back to, I mean, the owner would take over?
It's the same people that had it since Tibo died.
What would they do?
I don't know. They'll do whatever they want with it.
Can I ask, what's your wife's name?
Basima.
She's listed as the owner?
Right, she's a trustee for her family. It's her mom and dad that own the place.
Sounds very disingenuous, the way you're handling this ownership situation.
No, no, it's a family trust.
Right, but you just said you have no control over the property. You literally just said that.
No, no, I don't have control over it.
Okay.
I don't have control over it.
I can't.
I lease it, and I sublease it.
I can't. You know what I'm saying. You literally, you understand what I'm saying.
Yes, yes.
Your family has ownership control. You know, you have control over what happens to this property.
My in-laws, not me, my in-laws. I cannot tell them.
Even though your wife's listed as a trustee?
She's the trustee for her family, yes. Her mom is in her family, not me.
But what I'm saying is, the property, the property now has been modified.
Somewhat, yes.
To do something else out of it.
No, it's the same. Just electric, plumbing, and a bathroom, and the vault.
May I ask if the adaptable industrial would encompass something like this?
It would still be industrial.
It would still be industrial, even though there.
It's just an overlay in the industrial district.
Right, I just.
Unless it's in the table of use. Is it literally just, I didn't even look at the table of use.
Well, that's just another consideration of where else should, it's not just, it's a larger question. Just where else would it appropriately, this would be used, go other than commercial?
Okay, I was just wondering.
Overlay industrial is not allowed. I already checked that. Broad Street, I take that back. On Broad Street, I already asked, they said overlay. District is not allowed delivery. So it would have to be industrial somewhere else.
The part, the part that is a little bit mind-boggling to me here is, you're very worried about you've spent your last cent in this place. So where is the money gonna come from now to outfit a whole new place, build it out, and then pay some crazy rent for that location? Your best bet is to use your investments as you've already done here, in this, in this space. You've already got a lot invested in it. Why not try to make this spot work for you?
I know, that's a possibility. That's a possibility, but we'll try our best. I thank you, guys.
You're welcome. We have in front of us, we don't have in front of us. We did ask, I asked Chantel if she could reach out to Revolutionary Clinics, or One Oak Hill, to update on the window, because that was supposed to be, like, in the winter, to be able to see a mock-up, to see what the window's gonna look like that they want to replace. And also, what's the statuses on the odor mitigation system, and she said she hasn't heard back from them.
I reached out twice, so I can send a letter like I did before.
I think you should send a letter and CC the Board of Health, and I think we should CC the Cannabis Control Commission.
Oh, sure.
And let them know they're on our radar.
Okay.
So, let me just give a little, one extra step of advice. Talk to Attorney Pollock first. Because she was the one that most recently, and again, I don't know where her relationship is now, but I do know she's still employed by the city. She was the one that told us that they would, that the city would be interested in enforcement. So she might have some suggestions for you as far as what the best way is to handle notification, or maybe, maybe city legal calls them, or whatever. I don't know what the answer is, but you should probably talk to them first and then go from there.
Okay, I can do that, and.
And if you don't get an answer, send them a letter.
If they paid their fines or have been known for the fine.
And the Board of Health has fined them, so.
Status of those activities.
Yeah, right, exactly. So maybe a little more information on that side, and getting more information before we send the letter out.
Yeah, can you touch base with Steve Curry, or someone at Board of Health, and just ask if anything has happened since then? If there's either been more enforcement, or more complaints, or.
Yeah, as of, like, about a month ago, they said they're still receiving complaints. They have fined them multiple times. And they, he essentially inquired if the planning board would consider pulling their permit.
Well, that requires a legal evaluation.
Yes.
So.
Okay.
It's like, just what is the next step, and whether it's a letter, and to what degree do we, I know, let the CC see no issues.
All right, okay.
And if we can't get them to do it, then somebody else can. And if we can't get them to do it, then somebody else can.
All right, all right. I can follow up and touch base with the board next month about what I hear back from Legal.
I mean, we've started with some good faith pieces here, when we know about these, like, shipping and delays, but just to not be responsive at all, at these points, we've been, it's been delayed and delayed and delayed.
They just need to communicate.
Yeah, we're lacking the communication here, so we're not feeling that comfy about it. And it's still ongoing, it's just still ongoing.
It might be helpful to, to maybe suggest to Steve Curry, or someone in his office, to, you know, if they have comments, come to our meeting next month, and we'll, hopefully, we can hash it out with the property owner, because, you know, I know Attorney Pollock, during our public hearing, tried to say something about enforcement, and then I never heard about anything again from the Board of Health, or from Attorney Pollock, or, you know, Steve Curry, or anyone, so.
Okay.
You know, I think there's a major communication issue too, so.
Sure.
If we can, maybe we can just do it in a public hearing, and kind of, if they have suggestions for us, we can impose them.
Looking for a definitive schedule of when this mitigation is going to be completed. Absolutely, the rooftop, the big, the major pieces. Yes, they've worked on their interior, and it's, you know, beneficial to some, to some degree for them and their staff, but it's all the exterior complaints.
I believe, I believe in the fall, it was, it was May, it was supposed to be when it was supposed to be done, and we're in May, so.
Yeah, we are. I think you mentioned June, and you wanted, you know, essentially, I, I think, was it 140 industrial?
Native Son, yeah.
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 That, that one as well, about this time, so. Yeah, I can follow up on those.
You can inquire with the board if there's any other businesses that have odor issues.
Yeah, with the Board of Health.
I've been up at Monty Tech because my son plays baseball, so I've been out, and I haven't smelt it, but you, but you got the other smell going on with the.
I was, I was told by one of the industrial park owners who I met the other day that they think it's gotten better, because I think that's a conversation I had.
And I've been there like multiple times a week.
I, I think that you certainly can reach out to them and just say, "Hey, how's everything going?", but we should focus on, and certainly, the Board of Health should be telling us when they're fining people any of these facilities for smell, because although they have control of fines, we have more direct control of the special permit. So when they happen, I, you know, ideally, they should CC you every time a fine happens.
Well, also, it's the building, the zoning enforcement officer on the special permit. There are conditions in the permit.
Right, they can be fined by the Board of Health, and by the.
Yeah, $300 a day for the special permit violation.
Yeah.
So start the clock.
Okay.
Bring down the hammer.
It, it doesn't seem like they're listening.
No, it really doesn't. So I think you're correct on trying to figure out what the next steps are.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thanks.
Our next item is Montechuset Regional Planning Commission appointment. I think Alin was our appointee last time. How are you feeling about comfort with that? Or are you looking maybe potentially even another board member?
I mean, I attend when I can, which ends up being maybe a few times a year. So as long as you're okay with that continuing, I can, I can continue to serve.
Let me preface this by saying, I am more than okay with you continuing and doing that. If you, if you want relief, I feel obligated to offer that I would be willing to do that for you, Alin. But it's, but it's only, it's only if you want a break, and I don't feel pressured. It's really up to, it's really up to you. I've, I've done it before, many years ago, I'm more than willing to do it again.
No, it's, it's fine, I can continue to do it.
Can we nominate?
Make a motion to nominate Alin.
Alin.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say opposed. And roll call, Amanda?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Paula, aye. Tracy?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Alin?
Aye.
I have to say yes.
You could have voted against yourself, too. You still would have gotten it.
Yeah.
Alright.
And then I know we have, okay, we do have other business. I think it was just F Communication about a notice of intent for property on High Rock Road. Maybe.
I can pull it up on GIS, just so if anyone's curious about property.
Is there anything, information, Chantel, about that? Do you know?
I read through it, and it looks like they want to take the land out of.
I, I know the whole background, if you don't know the background.
Restriction, and I feel like this is just more of an FYI, that they have to notify the planning board of doing that.
Yeah, the city has right of first refusal, so these are, let me see if I can pull it up. These are parcels that they built one, well, the lot with the houses is still there, but they, there's a field with some frontage, and there's a builder that's going to buy it and wants to build at least, I think, three or four houses on the property. Oh, I am up. So this is, this is the main property, this one right here, and this frontage on Pearl Hill Road. It's, the actual address is Zero High Rock, but doesn't have any High Rock frontage. And then there's a couple other parcels. Let me see if I can find them. Nope. Well, anyway, we don't need to get into it. They, they want to build houses on it, and they need a right of first review. They need to go through the steps, the city can say they don't want to buy it. We've never done anything with these in the past. I don't know, I don't think it requires a vote of the planning board.
Yeah, I, I thought it was more of an FYI.
They just have the, they just have to give us notice.
Right. I mean, I suppose if we ever took issue with something, we could bring it to the mayor or the council, but. Okay.
Okay.
Good.
And then we have two sets of minutes.
Okay, what do you want to do first, April 23?
Sure.
Okay.
It's April of 2023. We're getting close.
No, isn't it last month?
No.
Mm-mm, April last year.
April of last year.
Oh, and then we went to November?
And we have November.
Right, that's.
So it was April and November of last year, and yes. And then we have left, I think, we have May, December, and last month. So we're getting close.
Great job.
Sets each time.
Getting there.
Yeah. Out of here, I go. So Paul's brought it up on the screen. I went through it. So the draft that you see already has my comments in it.
Mine, too.
Updated with that, and as well as Paul's. I don't know if anybody else had any further comment on them, or.
I just have a name change on the November ones.
Did we get your name right again?
No, no, not that, no.
On a different one?
Yeah, on the November.
Make a motion to approve our April 2023 minutes.
Second. Motion's been made with the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say opposed. I'm going to take roll call. Amanda?
Aye.
Alin?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye. And now November. Oh, I didn't get, fix your name, did I?
No, no, they're fine. My names are fine.
All right.
What did, what did we miss?
On the Cell Street?
Just give me a page.
Oh, wait, hold on, I'm getting there.
Oh, hold on, I can, so I didn't review Cell Street for obvious reasons.
Yeah, so the, wait, I can't find her.
35 Columbus.
Hold on.
Oh, here we go, Tegra.
It says Steph Holland, but her name's Beth Holland.
I got it. So it's the first under public comment, right here, if you look at my screen, next to where it says Nova Ave, Steph Holland.
Yeah, it's Beth Holland.
What page is that, Paul?
This is page eight. That's, it's pretty much dead center, under public comment, first name.
Okay.
But it said again afterwards.
Okay, so you can fix that. All right, anybody else have any?
Make a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say oppose. Roll call, vote. You guessed it, Amanda.
Aye.
Alin?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
To adjourn. With the second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Guys, one second, before I forget. I'm not going to be available for the September meeting.
We didn't talk about July.
We didn't talk about July.
Okay, we're going to rescind that adjournment for the moment.
Rescind?
Well, this doesn't have to be, this has to be, he can shut down, this doesn't have to be in public hearing.
Second motion I have made, but whatever.
Alright, so.
I can't.
You want to.
Either. What about July?
I actually have a conflict in July as well.
So the options are, we keep it as is, and Paula just can't be here.
Right.
Or we move it if we can get a sufficient six board members or more to be here a different night. And I told her, I'm completely indifferent, so whatever the board wants to do.
So what do you mean, like, another night?
Could be back on like, of the same week, or another Tuesday?
My suggestion would be the 30th, if we do another different night, which would be the Tuesday after that, so it'd be the fifth Tuesday in July. Because this room should be open, the, because there's no fifth Tuesday on our calendar, I don't think.
Not normally.
And even if it's not open, we can do third floor. I don't know if Dan can look at the calendar when he gets a chance.
Public works, huh?
Yeah, so, I mean, if.
Again, so.
Okay.
I can do that.
I'm not sure. I'm on vacation that week, but I think I'm doing a staycation, so.
On the 30th?
Yeah.
Peter, Alin, and Alex, what do you guys think about?
I, I can do the 30th.
July 30th. Alex?
Uh, yeah, July 30th is open on my calendar, so that should work.
What about you?
I think I can do the 30th.
Alright, well then, even if Tracy can or can't, that's the same amount of people as if you aren't here, and you're the chair, so let's do it the 30th.
Okay. Right, I'll put it on my calendar. I'm just not, yeah, if I'm not going anywhere, I'll come. I don't, and I don't.
I'm going away, so I'll be like, I'll, I should.
What was the, Alex, what was the concern you brought up? I was, I immediately jumped to Paula's thing.
I booked it a year ago, so it was.
I'm not going to be available for the September meeting. I'm going to be actually traveling.
Okay.
Yeah, me too.
September.
Do we have to change that anyway?
Yeah, we did. We changed it to 17th.